I am, I just, we have a, we have a participant. Oh, this is so exciting, we have a participant.
Okay, alright. I, yeah, the time, I was gonna start what I call a meeting back to order, my apologies. It's 6:07 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order in regular session. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. And a recording of the meeting will be accessible on the Town of Titan YouTube channel for later viewing. We are not currently wearing masks. We're safely socially distanced around the table. However, we do mask up when we move in the common areas of the meeting room. There's three ways that you can participate if you so choose. There are no scheduled hearings. Public input may be provided. Using one of those three methods, you can either email us, call us at 774-872-0920, or via Zoom at the link below. And at this time, I will ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since the last meeting, I would like to mention the passing of Geraldine Ravello, Norman Matthews, Don Pratt, and Selectman Machika would like to mention Mr. Pratt.
Yes, Mr. Pratt was a member of the Titan Historical Society, was an active member. He was a veteran of the US Air Force. One of his hobbies was woodworking, and he made a display cabinet for the society, which, if anybody had not been doing this here, this were great. I give my sympathy to his wife, 45 years more, more than, sorry. And I would like to say, anybody who knows me, I don't say it too often, but he was a good man. So I would ask for a moment, so I know it's always pretty deep, but thank you.
Thank you.
I don't apologize, and our condolences as always to their family and friends, of course. Okay, we are 10 minutes behind, but the good news is that we had two cancellations. Or not good news, but we did have two cancellations, so we're actually on schedule. And at this time, we have an update on the Old Town Hall meeting room from our Building Commissioner James Agnew. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hello everyone, so as you know, we had two charges. We have computer tables that are going in, and we're going to relocate the water selectmen to the stage area. So I'm happy to say that all of the electrical and energy infrastructure is in. We're just trying to track down computer tables, which ironically is more difficult than I thought. There's been a shortage in manufacturing, so right now the lead time is out a few weeks, but we're trying to get that, cut that down. So I'm hoping to have those in here in the next week or two. The conduit has been run from your area up to the stage for the microphones. So I was hoping that we could have a brief discussion about how we want to proceed with the cable, because I think there are two questions we need to be answering. How are we getting that done? And then how are we going to do live, so the selectmen meetings can be live? So if I understand that correctly, we need to run cabling from here over to the stage area for microphones.
Yes.
So I'm guessing we'll be down to Mr. Pink and company?
When we get in, when we contact the area, then we'll start that process up. Our is running the cable, we'll have to figure out what, what lengths we need. Hopefully we get, if it's like a 75 footer, it'd be nice to keep them together, instead of trying to splice them together, you know.
Sure. Okay, so I'll work with them on that directly. The other thing that I think we should maybe discuss is to go live here, I understand there's two ways. We can either do hot wire for a fiber optics cable, or we can do it through antennas, which is less efficient and not a preferred method.
As a public IP, basically when you do that, we talked about this in an earlier meeting, it's open to anybody, so if you get like a number of cell phones trying to make a call in the air, it's taken up. So you've got so many tactics that gotta go through to do like three frames per second. You start dropping packets, and it's not gonna look that great. That's why we're gonna have a solid, a solid connection, like a fiber wire, just come to the building. I think tons of tall strands, we're only gonna use two. So down the road, you still have other options, or you can add more things to that cable. So in the long run, it'd be good for this building to have the extra connections for, you know, projects that's gonna come up down the road.
So I know we're not gonna get all that straightened out at this meeting, but I would like to know, the pleasure of the selectmen, do you want me to see what that will cost? See if it's even feasible? I'd have to work with Tom Ferry, Cable, Town Administrator. It's a small cable, so I think we can do it, and be very non-intrusive, but you're still gonna have, we're gonna have to have a discussion. But I know the selectmen said they want to be live, which I think is important. So, so with that, I just maybe discuss your opinion on whether we'll move forward with pricing on that.
Sure. Yeah, I'm more interested in the fiber cable also. That might be the best system that we have. And as you know, I would advocate that we be live as soon as possible. You may not be as soon as possible. You may not be soon, but hopefully we can work this as fast as we can. I'm interested in the price and the cost, obviously, but I think you ought to check that out if you go with this.
Okay.
I agree, I think it is pretty soon.
Okay.
I'd agree too.
I have a question. We were discussing a half wall or something, and I know the equipment is at next to the, I'm sorry. So the equipment, I got the opportunity to actually see exactly what the live equipment is. It's pretty large, but the cable folks were concerned about sort of protecting that and making sure that we were okay, you know, shoring of our equipment.
So there are two things I'd like to propose. I know everyone on the stands, I have a long place for the space in my part, so we have to work on a ramp area to get access to the stage. In doing that, I would like to also have this, the current relocation for cable, and actually build them a E-wall, something that would camouflage them from the rest of the world. Not them, but all of this apparatus. And it would sort of be done, I would like to do it simultaneously, because we're gonna try to make the ramp look as original as we can, but I'd like to make this wall look as original as we can. So I guess I'm looking for the selectmen's opinion whether that should be done at the same time. And if so, I can incorporate all of the needs for cable into that, and make sure they have all the infrastructure in place, as well as the security that I would require.
So I have a question then. I know that this seating over here is gonna have to go because of the pandemic.
Correct.
Are we able to maintain that seating though, without wall?
I am, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna try and make the wall, you know, the seating will stay. Actually, it involves guys to try and use it, if they want cushions, we'll try and accommodate that. But I'm gonna try to keep everything as original as we can, and not stop cutting that up. That'll eventually break my heart to cut it, but we have to do it. We'll save it, obviously, if there's repurposed somewhere, but yes, so that was the opinion of the survey.
You just add to that, the Titan Historical Society, which cut the benches that were in here, because it couldn't be used anymore. We have the cushions of those benches, so we need them.
Okay.
I have probably some over here.
It's a great idea, thank you. So I would just wanna know what the pleasure of the selectmen did? Do you want me to move forward with those two things? I, I think we can keep most of that in-house. There was some material that we required, but I'm not talking about a big expensive project. Where's your pleasure for that?
I'd be interested in the cost, obviously, but I think it's something that I think we're gonna have to do.
And you, and it's okay with you? I think your specific question was to do these both sort of at the same time?
Correct.
It makes sense.
Yeah, I think we should be all inclusive, and, and you know, when looking at the setup here, if they send away those benches, well, for example, if this was replicated on the stage up there, I don't know if there's a way to do them here. Because the thing is, it's additional seating.
Sure.
But just a thought, so we don't.
Okay, sure.
Are you saying the part that needs to be removed over here could be added here?
Well, see, that one actually goes onto the stage. Over here, we used to have that, we would move it on, so it might be possible to put some, you know, extend those little benches up there. And I, I agree, as a matter of fact, other than that vent over there, there's a loose, that little part there, that maybe part of it could go that way too.
Is that where the, my brother's stuff is gonna go?
Oh, that's where the computers are gonna be.
I mean, they won't be long term, but yeah. So I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying, I'll definitely do that as well.
But I think it's, we might as well get all the information at the same time, so we know what the cost is for each, each step we have to take. The other thing is, eventually we'll have a fall town meeting, and so if we have all the information ahead of time, we can, you know, make plans.
I don't think these two items are gonna be very expensive. In fact, if I'm memory spurt's me right, I think we allocated $3,000 for some of the electrical and all that infrastructure work. Not sure if that was the number, but I, I think we're on a budget on that. So we've got some money to buffer over from that. So I don't have all of those yet, I'm speak prematurely.
The going live portion is a little bit more expensive, right?
Oh yeah, that doesn't, that's not included.
So we have a, yeah, we have an item on the, well, it's not created yet, but if we do have a fall town meeting, it would be a warrant ever felt.
Right, yeah. That number I said was what we approved for, for this stuff done in the microphones up there.
Just one other question, a comment really. If we could get at least, at least one more outlet, because the electric hall, I've been here for presentations.
Yeah.
It's the only one that seems to be available, so.
So what I thought I would do, after we get the water selectmen set up on the stage, and we kind of see where people wanna set up to do a presentation, I'll put it on the floor. I'll, in that spot, but I didn't want to just throw a dot. You know, I want to know exactly what happened there. So, but yeah, that's something we can do. Sure.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I know that basically around the swans are bringing, we have those outlets in the floor on our stage, it makes a lot of sense. I was asked, I know it's gonna be a dead north, so we need to coordinate.
Yeah, I just, I, I need you to support it, and then we'll follow, so, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, I also think we should do a vote at the same time. I know we rely on you for a lot, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna like throw a lot at you or ask you to do the town hall stuff, but I know you'll manage everything. I think we should do a vote at once.
Yeah.
Or just at least get the pricing and everything, and you can manage how that actually works.
Yeah, thank you, I think we're doing it pretty well. And I'm not starting the town hall renovations until the A.C. works again, so.
Of course.
I think townspeople will also be happy to hear, we wanna make some additional updates at the Old Town Hall. Here's a list, and we have the crisis, and we're gonna look at this step by step and figure out what we can do, as opposed to say, oh, we got this. Oh, now we got that. They don't, they don't like, they like to see plans.
Sure. So for your next meeting, I'll work, we'll get a plan approved, I'll go through the ADA officer, and then we'll cover the price for that, and this, and with Gary and the cable, we'll bring that back to you. And then, once that's done, I'd like to get the water selectmen over here and put it firmly tabled, so. Okay?
Awesome.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. And then no further questions, I believe it's good.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are a little premature for our 6:30. So I guess we could start our discretionary spending, of course?
Can you guys do that to me?
No, we're not gonna finish, but I think.
Do you want to just do the announcements then?
Sure, we can start with that. One thing, so Selectman Machika, I've been asking you to do this for the announcement. I had a brief conversation with Town Administrator Aaron Steen, and there are a couple committees, I think yours might actually be one, the ADA Commission, that don't have forums, and we're on the verge, the Open Space Committee, of not having one. And so maybe if you could feel free to highlight those ones, because those are like committees we really need. Like the Bylaw Committee, Open Space Committee, and the ADA Commission, yeah. Although we did get interest today, so you, you might be seeing something coming through the path.
You have the floor.
So I have an announcement from the water connection regarding the water connection moratorium regulation. Detroit Water District Board of Water Commissioners has announced that there's a water connection moratorium regulation, section one, should I do the whole thing? It's pretty lengthy.
Yeah, I would say that I would just give a summary.
Oh, I can do a summary.
But it's a, it's a moratorium on.
It's a moratorium on residential use for new construction for the town, it's for two years. It can change, it can be short, it can be, you know, depending on how drained it gets, but there is a moratorium. For those that are concerned about growth in town, it may be a good thing.
There was, so one thing, I'm not opening this up for discussion, but I actually read through it, because I had to contact one of the commissioners about something else. And one thing I found that was interesting was they will still consider, not, they don't say if they will approve it or not, but they will consider a new connection for a commercial business. But I suspect that they will have a lot of questions about that, meaning impact to what, like how much water do you need to use, like what's the impact in terms of capacity and things like that? So I thought that was interesting that they took the theory.
Sure, the other thing is, if somebody builds a house and wants to put a well in, they're allowed to do that, so it just goes by one night to the Detroit Water District.
How does this, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions about this one, you know, limited to one. How does this impact, like a proposed subdivision? So let's say, for like Strawberry Fields, or if I'll just be specific, are they already on the, in the registry IDs for that? So, so that, so that subdivision can't have town water, so if that means, correct?
And this particular matter was brought up during those hearings, and they were waiting, awaiting for some data engineering studies to be done. So it's not a surprise for that to be something.
We discussed it at the Strawberry Fields meeting, Public Care, which has been continued to August. And sewer water and lights were discussed, and the discussion related to the water district didn't deal with supply, it dealt with a range to the kind of specifications to what the district has, as far as size of mains and location of pipes, as opposed to, let's say, a gas line and that kind of stuff. But they have mentioned that initially the main concern was lack of supply of water, and since that, it's now also capacity to process water, and maintaining a, a, a little bit of a cushion case as a big fire, when there's a fire hiding. So there's been comments made, like we have to provide water, and the position is, this isn't the town, this isn't the town debt. So that discussion I'm sure is gonna take place.
On the other hand, it's my understanding that you've already applied for a building, and it ran by the end, like, right on that?
I think it's, that's why I asked, it's if you're in the registry IDs, it says it in the.
I, I can have a clarification. Sure. Because I allow people to point the finger at me, because I'm still issue of permits. This was actually a well-written moratorium, one did their homework. Any lot of land that meets the building law requirements has already recorded in the registry IDs, prior to the enactment of this document, still can get a building for them. There are at least a couple hundred of those still out there. So what it does stop is any subdivision of land from that date forward, and that includes subdivisions. It also eliminates any connections from multifamily properties to the water system, irregardless of when the land was recorded. So in that particular case, there'll be no multifamily. So, and the reason for that is, if someone has built a lot, who's been paying taxes on a building lot for all these years, the water department knew that they were getting to the end, and there is a finite amount of water available, what's, what's that amount? So we, I've been working with them over the last year and a half, how many built the lots do we have? So there will still be permits issued, but subdivisions will not be have water. One other important point, you mentioned wells. Wells will be allowed, but it increases the funding requirement. So that's gonna be a touch and go discussion, I'd say, in the future.
Correct.
Exactly, so.
So I have a question. Mr. Adia, if your subdivision has not yet been approved, and you just own the land, so at the registry it shows somebody owns a big chunk of land.
Correct.
If the subdivision has not been approved, then it's not eligible for water.
That is correct, that's correct, that's correct statement, please.
And the other thing is, as you said, there are, there are lots of it that are approved, that people may not decide they wanna build a house on. Do they have priority over a chunk of land that hasn't been approved for subdivision?
Well, right now, that chunk of land, we will not be able to get a water.
It's just a piece of land.
That's it. They can go through the process and get, go through the subdivision control process, but they will not be able to tie in the water, at least for two years at this point. So this also applies to lots that are created by the zoning board of appeals. So if there are undersized lots that are created by the ZDA, and that lot is not buildable today, they would not build a connection to that either. So it, it still has, it has an impact. Don't, don't misunderstand, but it also has implications for people who have owned a lot of the land, who know they can build a house on it, so. It was, it was, it was a very low thought process in the season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that doesn't apply to North, uh, Detroit Water District?
Correct.
It's just the Detroit Water District.
Next announcement is for the Pan Mass Challenge. This Pan Mass Challenge, Jimmy Fund by Pride, will not take place due to the pandemic. That does not mean that the need to raise money to continue the research of Dana-Faba Cancer Institute has gone away. On the contrary, the research that the public has funded for over 40 years needs to continue. Writers are still working to raise money for research. Some have mapped out routes for their teams that will equal the 192 miles from Sturbridge to Provestown. Since 1980, $717 million has been raised. Every penny donated to support this, every penny donated goes to support this cause. Please consider helping this great fundraiser by contributing to pnc/jimmyfund. Go to panmass@pmc.org or www.pmc.org. And we have some vacancies in the different boards of our other mentor Sunday, we told me not to mention. The ADA Commission needs two to make the forum, the Bylaw Committee needs two members, the Cable Television Committee needs two members, the Preservation Committee needs two members at large. The Fundance Committee needs three members, and the Open Space Committee needs one. There were other boards that need members. You can go on a Facebook page or a website and find out, actually, is it on the Facebook page?
I don't think so, but website.
On the website, you can go and see what vacancies are available, and there is allocation if you wanna volunteer for these committees.
And then, oh, you caught it.
Yes. The Town of Titan Food Bank Distribution will be held next on August 15, 2020. It's located at the Town Hall level as a drive thru. The past few months, they've been doing a drive thru, and it's worked out very well because of the pandemic, and that's our next drive thru. And the donations that the Lions Club received a couple weeks ago was great. I think we're pretty well set for the rest of the year. Mr. Ferry, who's the president, Chairperson President of the Lions Club, gave a list of plans and items that are needed, and it was very successful, and we've got a lot of fun partners.
Thank you, sir. Hi, Mr. Ferry, it is 6:30 PM, and we're going to discuss the appointment of Operator Class One. We did, we do have an application from Eric Moniz, I believe, that may be who you recommended, sir. Did you wanna speak to your recommendation?
I gave you a letter, right?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Moniz interviewed well, he's fairly young, he knows that. He has a lot to learn, but he has a lot of experience already. He's very excited to come, he's been texting me every day this week, multiple times. He's eager to get started, everybody. The only thing I haven't heard back is from the Karen's office on the quarry, but everything else is in place and passed, or the other three plans.
And that doesn't impede the appointment?
Well, it would be pending successful question of that and the test for the pre-employment.
Right, so that would bring us, if you guys are in favor, when this stops, it would be, it could be pending that, I don't know.
But we can cover by just, in terms of this not coming back to us, we're just doing the amendment that you had said in motion?
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Ferry?
I have this done.
Okay, any questions?
No, I had an opportunity to look at the resume in his letter, and I was impressed with the resume in the letter, so I'm prepared, and this is going against the test, so I make a motion, I'm prepared to make a motion, that he appoint Eric Moniz to the Highway Department, pending the inquiry.
And, and.
And the pre-employment.
That's, that's what he's doing.
Oh, he did do that.
He passed out that. He's ready to go.
And encourage.
Okay, a second.
We have a motion, and it's happening?
Do we need to have a date, a spot, a date, or we, we let it up? Do we need to call it? Once that happens, you can, anytime.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for the recommendation. If we have no further discussion, all of us, if they would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes, and I hope you are just as excited as Mr. Moniz for him to stop. And thank you. Next on the agenda, we have an appointment, wait, discussion rather, at 6:40. So. There's, so I don't think there's actually gonna be anyone here for that appointment, is it not possible to start that?
You can, yeah, I'm sure we'll be talking about it.
Okay, 'cause I, I have some, like I included in the packet some feedback that we got. And I guess I'll just start this, and this might actually be a very short discussion, to be honest. So I will start this by saying, the reason I put this on the agenda was to see if the board would be amenable, and, and I have not given my opinion on this particular proposed legislation, to contacting our state delegation one way or the other about this bill. And so that's why I wanted to start the discussion, and that's why it's on here. I included in the packet some correspondence that I received, both from two local unions, two public safety, local unions we have in town, and then some other correspondence. What I was unable to include in the packet, and I apologize to my colleagues, was a letter that the Massachusetts Municipal Association had sent to the Chair People of the Ways and Means Committee, and I wasn't able to include that in here, I do have it here, if anyone would look to reference that. And so with that, I will, does anyone have any opinions? We can, so I will start by saying, we can absolutely wait to see how it plays out in the House, like I think that's fair. I think there are probably a lot of local, not just local union groups, but there are probably a lot of state union groups that are gonna do that. We can do nothing, we can send a letter, or see how it plays out, so.
I just wanna comment that, we can wait and listen to what the unions say, but we also need to listen to what the public says, because this is about Black Lives Matter. This is about George Floyd having this meat, or even that, that killed, and it's been spelled like this, happening in the past, and we're trying to prevent it from happening in the future. I, I went a lot of things on the bill, I did not read the whole, the second pages of the bill. I do have some, you know, in favor of a certification, in favor of getting rid of the oil and the gas, militaryizing the police departments, however, the liability, and I agree 100% about that. I worked for the, for the state as a probation officer, I don't want to bring this up in the meantime, because.
No, it's your free to reply to that.
I was, we were always told that if you're doing your job, you will be cut. The state, the Attorney General of the state will represent you. However, if I'm malicious, I do something, I, for example, sexually harass a client of ours, then I can act that, and when I became Chief Probation Officer at the Town District Court, I made all my probation officers, made them aware, I will back you 100%. However, if you are doing something malicious, you're asking them to do something in jail because you're gay, and you don't, or whatever, you're getting a badge, because you're not gonna get anything back from the state. There is, you know, there is racism out there. I have dealt with many of these, obviously, in the course of my career. I can say very few that I am aware of were racist, but there are racist cops out there. My son-in-law, who is black, lived in my house for a short time, and in neighborhood, they stopped numerous times, driving thru, it's called driving while black. And I had probation officers, and I saw these surrounding towns, and I did, I wanna make it clear, it's not dying. Also the stopping, as a, you know, just get stopped and asking them questions that you or I will not get stopped for. So there is a concern, and we are here. So I don't mind listening to what the unions are saying, but I, there is racism, and we need to stop. And I don't want this to go away, so I am in favor of waiting to see. And I, I don't want this to go away, so I am in favor of waiting to see that the House goes, because I believe that they're going to do something different about what I'm doing versus what they said. I don't like the fact that the Senate never had public hearings, because the House didn't have public hearings. I think they need to hear all the parties, all the players, so anyway, that's my little speech.
Yeah, I think, um, in, in, in my conversations that I've actually had with, um, just, not even just local public, just like in general, I have other friends that are in public safety, in other states and, and cities and towns in the country, and, um, talking about their legislation and their local communities or in their states. There are some good things in it, and, and they will acknowledge that there are good things in it. And, um, but then there are things, like you said, where they have, uh, and I'll just speak for myself now. I have an apprehension with the qualified immunity thing, not because people shouldn't be held accountable. I think we will all, and everybody, if, for whatever job you do, you should be held accountable for the job that you do, whether it's if you're a janitor, or whether you're, um, up at a police office or anything like that. My concern is just as a selectman, is the potential impact that that could have in terms of lawsuits and, and just expenses to the town that, that we didn't see. And so I call those unintended consequences for something that might be good intentioned. Um, and so I guess that's where I fall on this. I mean, al- also, I'm, I'm willing to see what happens in the House, because I suspect with two hundred seventeen proposed amendments to the bill that they got from the Senate, it's going to change, and that's going to prompt it to go back to the Senate. And they're going to have to have a conference and hash those things out. So that's, that's where I fall on this. Did you want?
Yeah, um, I had a conversation with, uh, Ken Raven, uh, prior to the annual school graduation, and I did mention this. And obviously, we considered to express this lack of public input, this, this whole situation. You know, I, I read through these letters, uh, the reference to the endemic, indemnification laws do not sufficiently protect public employees. That includes all of us, but I didn't agree with that statement. I can remember this coming up, uh, when I was on the board many years ago, and when I came back. And, um, the, the town of Dayton does carry insurance over the amount that is mentioned in this letter. Uh, that's the first limit, but then beyond that, there's a lot, a larger brother. The insurance that is being referenced protects anyone as long as they don't break the law or do anything illegal or, uh, do things of that nature. In effect, the insurance companies will cut the person loose and say, get your own attorney, and this is yours to deal with. That has not happened in this town. This town has, we've had lawsuits, we've had threats of suits and everything else. Uh, we have never had an insurance company refuse to defend the town. And, um, personally, I think that, uh, this, this whole matter needs a lot more discussion than just the Senate passing it. Now it's going back to the House. Uh, this isn't like passing, everyone's got a version of the budget. There's the House budget, Senate budget, Governor's budget. Oh, and we're going to all get together and put it together, and I'm not even talking during a pandemic. But I really think something that is, is this important needed a lot more than what was done. I think I heard more noise about banning plastic bags than I did about this kind of thing. And so, uh, it will have ramifications for cities and towns that come with dollar signs. So I'm not ready to, uh, prepare a response or write a letter. As I said, I had a brief discussion with Mr. Raven, and I agreed that, so this has got to get out there. And you can be public here. It's maybe held around the state in some of the various areas.
I like the South Coast rail.
Yes. Well, there's enough public facilities where you can hold here. It's where there are, uh, community-owned properties, universities, colleges. They all have meeting facilities where you could gather input and find out how people feel. And obviously, the very large cities with very large police departments will have a different response than small communities, closely, closely knit communities. But we're all concerned about the same thing. So, so I agree with my, uh, fellow board members. No, I think it needs to sit. We need to hear a lot more and, and, you know, then decide, uh, where, if, and when we should make a statement or write a letter or jump on a bandwagon. We may end up deciding to rule the census input in on the South cells because it's, it's, uh, it's more directed at large communities. Wait a minute, don't forget us. The majority of communities are not the giant cities, so just.
Okay, I think that that's totally fair. And again, I think that's very in line with what the public safety, our local public safety unions, who this would directly impact have concluded. Or maybe this one.
I think that this is, this is the first opening. It, it doesn't mean that, uh, there are certainly other opinions and a lot more information that has to be yet. So this is where it starts. Just like at MMA, when something's proposed, I gotta have more information to jump on this bandwagon.
They actually did a good summary as well. I will forward that to both of you, um, after the, yeah, I see it. Okay, uh, thank you, board members. That conclude, oh, we finished three minutes, uh, into our.
Don't say that.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to segue into something that, um, we had discussed over the department head meeting. This will be on the agenda, so public, since we're in a discretionary spending phase, um, we have created a section on the agenda called discretionary spending requests, where, um, we receive rolling requests from different department heads, um, and then we put them on the next Board of Selectmen's meeting agenda, and then we decide, um, if this is something that warrants expenditure during this time of coronavirus. Um, and so, that administrative, since you have been collecting the requests, that means very fitting.
Absolutely.
If you want to start opening them.
So there are two that are not on this list that came in today. One, um, Karen had dropped off for you before the meeting Friday. It's, uh, a national security fire alarm system for the animal shelter. Another is, um, labels for the town clerk. So for her, the town clerk is requesting, uh, I think it's maybe sixty dollars.
Do we not even have one that's always?
With our discount?
Yes. Is that what we get?
No, it's not. These are.
This is gendered.
Down in here. That came in today.
This is additional.
This is additional. That came in today. It's, um, labels because of this mail-in voting initiative that the state has thrust upon cities and towns with no funding attached to it. Uh, we now have to do all of these different things to accommodate this. So each application ends up getting two labels for both elections. Um, you can click.
The time point in general?
Yeah, you can, uh, check off that you want all state, all elections, excuse me. Um, and so we have to go there for both. So she's, she's looking to get, um, labels.
Can I?
Two dollars. What was the dollar amount again?
One hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's it?
It's seven boxes of like easily labeled.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's not like permanent, but it's still paying kind of to have to enter this in all the time. I mean, that's a lot of work.
How many of these cost for you, or is it only?
That will certainly be placed on the CARES Act.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I did, uh, request that our state delegation consider these kinds of things coming down when they determine eventually local aid reimbursements for the town.
Board members, please.
They do.
I guess my question was, so they have an idea of how many labels they're going to need, right?
We did, so we, Sue and I did some math today.
Yep.
That we put every registered voter, if every registered voter did the mail-in, I mean, both things, it's like ten thousand something label.
Sure.
No, more than that. It's like twenty-something label.
But we could keep the extra in the recurbs.
Yeah, I mean, you totally use label. I'm going to use label all the time. Absolutely.
And that was, one, one more time, is this?
One hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
I think we need to cut you off.
I said all I need to say on that matter. Uh, we can keep doing it if you want to go in bulk, or last time you went.
Well, I think we should go by department.
Just one question on this. We're getting labels. So we have sufficient money for postage?
So that's another thing that's coming up.
Oh.
She's getting after mail, all this, and it's like eighty cents. It's not your regular meter grade, so.
This is, she gets the cards back, and then she has to do all the mailing out.
Right, right. So the state did the first, the state did the first push, where they put, you probably all received it, actually. And then now you send it in as a resident, you send it in, and now it's the clerk's turn to like respond. So they have to send all this stuff to you, and then you, you know, go forward that way. But it's, it's expensive. I mean, when you add up everybody doing it, and we are anticipating that this is going to be quite the popular election to vote in. It is an expense. And the early voting for both the primary and the presidential election, including Sundays, which is a frustration on my part.
And then the potential for, uh, for twice the mailing. You're doing that primary and they're doing it, which, which, I mean, I'm going to be doing anything.
Yeah, we sent that form today, huh?
There were a lot, though. I saw a stack the other day, and this is like, they're not even done collecting them. I mean, it was, there were hun- hundreds, like, I would not be surprised based on that if this turnout in this primaries in general is more than what it would have been had, had pre-coronavirus.
But then our last scheduled caucus meeting, should we have the town clerk come in and just explain what those cards need? Because the, if you're going to vote in the primary, you have to mail a lot of these.
I think the primary is starting then, so she'd have to come in on the twelve.
All right, all I'm saying is maybe she should just make an announcement so that people understand. I know it's all in the cards, but I know people can get confused.
Would you be okay if she's unable to make it on the twelve with some sort of prepared statement?
Yeah, a brief, a brief one. Look, she can get questions. They just, we ask questions.
Yes, I'm good enough. That's perfect. Yep.
So the other addition that we got, uh, for the, uh, animal shelter, is this the only, uh, one that we got that we checked as far as the cost for all of this?
So that cost is actually not correct. So there were two bids. So we got this one first that was over five thousand, and what we saw was, you know how the, um, you know how the animal shelter is narrow? It's not like, it's not wide. They were going to put one keypad in at the front and rear door, and what they ended up deciding, and, um, the animal control officer was okay with, was just doing one single keypad. And so the actual price is four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents is the actual price. And so I think, um, that that, because of the price is less than five thousand, that there's not a need to do additional bids. Am I correct?
Uh, ten thousand, and it's sound, sound business practices, but nationals are company for the other two, so.
I just, to your point, Slavko Chico, that's a really good question, and I, I get it. I just think it's better, um, to have like a bit of a continuity between the different systems that we're using. If we're all on the same system of all the calls, and when the alarm goes off, she goes to the same person. That's my only thought, honestly.
What was the dollar again?
Yep, it's four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And there, under the scope of work, it delineates what will be installed. So it's not just the key pads. There were some other things based on the job duties and, and just the role that, um, probably are a good idea to have in there.
Didn't I hear you say that we, we did get a second invoice or something?
This was, so the four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollar and eighty-five cents.
Second rate change.
Yeah, it was, it was reducing nothing off one of the key pads. Okay, um, so that was that. Are there any more questions on the animal shelter alarm system? I think we will just do it as a block, and then if there's one that's objectionable, we can maybe throw it out of the block.
Uh, the Council on Aging, I think I, uh, referenced this in the department meeting, is seeking a webcam, uh, for things like Zoom and to, uh, continue some remote services, sort of like the telehealth thing, where you would have a face-to-face conversation, where Council on Aging Services, they're still by appointment right now, and we don't really know what's going on with prime time and things going forward. It's a nice bridge, and, um, it's not like it's not handy, you know, like. She originally asked for three, but this is just one. I think they can get by with just one or two. I, I don't think there's a need to offer them, because if they're in the same office, we can't really have that unique conversation going at the same time, you know, together, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I'm, this is like an external camera, not like.
Yes, they don't, they have desktops. They don't have, uh, laptops, and so there's no camera. So they would need to plug in. I believe it's a USB. I actually don't remember, but I think it's a USB. Plugs in, links up with the computer, and serves as a functional webcam.
Can I ask an unrelated question that you just reminded me of while I was listening to you? So we obviously can't stream live, but we always do the Zoom anyway because, um, we, we have to. It's a way that they can, people can participate remotely. Do we want, as a board, until we can stream live from this building and the infrastructure is implemented, do we want to stream live on YouTube from the computer, like, or are we okay with just not? Nobody can participate live?
No, people can do that.
That's why I'm waiting, why? Well, as long as they're in the, this is not streaming, no.
But that's what I'm, we can click the button and then have it stream live, so I, I, do we want to do that? We can just do it as we're doing it. I'm okay with that, but do we want to give people the opportunity to?
I know there are a lot of people who tried to do that, and somebody said to me, you're streaming live, and then I lost it, and I couldn't get back, and it was whatever.
Yeah, it's probably like the department.
Yeah. Doing our best. It's, it might be a lot to monitor. I don't know.
I'm okay.
I don't know. I mean, I'm only trying.
We should at least ask the question and, um.
Yeah, I would like, if it was able to be live, I would prefer that. I'm not sure how reasonable it is, but, uh, maybe cable can.
Well, they would have to, what happens is I would be the host still.
Yeah, I was just that fine, I directed that you.
They would link me through the YouTube's, um, channel for Dayton, and then it would stream live. But is there anything I have to do while that's going? I've never, I've never had to be the YouTube one.
And we would, we can, we don't have to do it right here, right now. We can start next time. And, and I'm happy to come in early, and we'll get that. Okay. Did you have a thought?
No, I think you answered my question. It's just, it can happen. So I guess we're. Yes, you need you guys to work.
Yep, we'll do that for this.
No disrespect when I say you guys, but, uh, you two can, can work on it if it's possible. Try again if it's not possible, then I, I.
Now, does anyone find the webcams before we move on? This web, so are you suggesting two? I'm sorry.
I'm suggesting an upper limit to accommodate for like two, because, I don't know. The request I received verbally was three, and I see just one here. So I just want to make sure we're not making a decision that, you know, inhibits somebody from doing their job.
Does anyone have an issue with up to two? Sixty dollars total?
No.
Okay.
The Board of Health is looking for some regular office supplies. Um, these include very menial, you know, sticky notes, notepads, retractors pens, but like, I think the total for that is around like fifty or sixty dollars. Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, just a general question. So we don't buy in bulk, for example, pens and stuff like that? We just each department?
Well, I don't buy in bulk for pens, because I generally go with the things like, uh, I'll take. I like take pens and, uh.
Okay, this is cool, I don't pay you.
So.
They should be on the conference.
That's why she's upset it's going to be virtual this.
Yes. Hopefully they mail us.
I'm still using stand side for those things, um, but like paper clips. The accounting office has a ton of paper clips. That's how everyone's submitted. So if somebody needs paper clip, you just say, hey, look if you have, and she gives you some. So, um, we recycle, reuse, recycle, so things like that we generally don't need. So I mean, they're only looking for one box, and that will last at least two years.
The stuff we do buy, it comes off at the bid list very, yeah, so.
That's right, and we have a sixty-one.
By not buying the facility.
I want to double check. I have an amazing quote for the town clerk, because that doesn't seem right to me, but, um, we shall see. I guess we get a sixty-one percent discount.
I know where you're, you know where, Slavko, but you, like, I get what he's meaning. He's probably, and I think it's very valid. It's like, okay, if we're only going to buy one iPad notepad, well, what if the other departments need it, and then we can buy twenty, and then each single notepad ends up being cheaper than.
So this is a pack.
That's what you meant by that, right?
Yes.
The iPad notepads are a pack.
I, I was.
Okay, yeah, we're not buying one notepad out of the way. Generally, like, looking at this, this would last me easily a year, looking at their list, easily, more than that. Maybe not sticky notes, because I use those all the time, but again, I'll, I'll take those off the tables and reuse those all the time, too. So, um, they have been quite busy. I know they use, sticky notes was, was upstate when they were talking about it, so.
Those are important to me. I, I totally get that. This is, the next one's Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes, at GNCV.
Okay.
This is the other.
Is this the Board of Disasters? Because then I saw a policy manual, like, did they do one, two?
No, so this is us, the paper we've been doing as needed, but not as a, we usually do order paper in bulk, because we order for the entire town, all of our paper, for sure. Uh, we've been going very, uh, limited on that, just to be conscientious of, um, how, you know, how much money we're letting go for the building. But paper should be a continual thing. I have proven we need to supply the medical medicine cabinet down there, um.
And actually, you realize by the whole building?
The whole town, anybody, if like, if it would probably comes in, and like the, I need a motor, it's there for them. Um, and then, you know, we also are looking for sticky notes and a binder, and, um, just some things to get us rocking and rolling. Uh, we are doing an immense amount of work getting the order made to do it, so, uh, now we've run out of everything that we've had in bulk, and we're keeping going, so that's.
I'm gonna say, I feel like our, I, I can only speculate on our supplies, because that's the office that I'm in, they last forever, I feel like. Like, I feel like the hanging folders, the green ones have been in there, like, we've been going through them slowly for like four years since I've been here. Um, so, it's not like, I just don't want anyone to think like we just used something once, and we actually reuse the folders, that's probably why they stay in there. I'm just giving you as an example of how we think when we use resources, like, we don't just not think about it, we're very aware.
Absolutely, uh, so that's there, uh, the fire department is, this is a very conservative estimate of a hundred dollars. It's mailbox, post, and insulation, uh, by the highway folks. Um, we are asking for this, because he was forced to bought, to, to purchase, the fire department was forced to purchase a P.O. box, and we were kinda like, it's a neighborhood, why wouldn't the post office just kind of jive right by? So, some conflicting reports, who did the, uh, who did the P.O. box, and I said, I called the postmaster, or somebody at the post office myself, and I said, what, how does it work? How do we get this done? So it's a sixty-dollar subscription, the mailbox and the post are about sixty bucks. So one-time cost for the mailbox, we forward mail, and now they get their mail at the station. They don't have to pay for a recurring sixty-dollar P.O. box.
Go there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the inventory of the post office box is certainly more than.
Right, and so we have, we have two for the town, which we would have been able to get out of, but we can't because of this mail-in ballot, like, so.
The other problem, where we have two post offices.
Yes.
Federal government recognizes only Dayton, zero-two-seven-one-five. So, um, yeah, it's, it's a problem.
So that, this probably sounds menial, that's why I explained it, but it's a possible measure of any way. And, uh, we're coinciding this with when the subscription ends, uh, which is October. Okay. Building Department is looking to repair the vinyl siding at Old Town Health, makes a lot of sense. Uh, Highway is looking for repairs on two thousand four pickup, which includes tires, front-end alignment, trailer hitch, and flatbed to replace the rotted body. And, uh, I should also have started with this, this is all coming out of operating funds, so it's all bunches, it's, um, you know, we have these monies available. And then the last item is the Trails Committee, uh, they had come before us a while ago, like the budget season, telling us exactly what they're looking to do, and then this pandemic happened, and so he did ask, can I do this? Um, and I said, well, let's ask, because we're, we're trying to get people outdoors, people are home, they're not really doing anything, so it might be nice for them to enjoy our trails. And so he wants to move forward with the bench and the kiosk and all of that stuff he detailed, or they, excuse me, they detailed for us. And I think they might also be a committee that lacks a forum, or is almost not a forum, so Dayton shows maybe.
Yes, yeah, because there was a resignation, you're right, yes.
So, um, they're up and running and off and rolling, and have lots of stuff going, so they're looking to get started. Um, and I'm sorry, I, I'm glad I said the calls in manual, because you asked about this. This is not, this is something we can put together electronically, but I did wanna ask, because we have been working on it for a couple of years. We wanted everybody, you know, current employees to have a bound property, we point at policies that would really make a lot of endlaying, so that's why I was there, but the hard term's a break, if you stay young, so.
Uh, so before we get to that, um, we heard, uh, Fire built in Highway and Trails, didn't it have any objections to anything in those particular?
Just a question on Highway, is all of that work gonna be done in-house?
Yes.
You mean to the place?
Except for the front-end alignment.
Okay, but our, the town mechanic can do the other, all the town employees.
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, just because I'm curious now, um, when the work can't be done by the town mechanic, like this front-end alignment, where does, where does the vehicle go for that?
I, we have several local venues that we, we work with, and.
Awesome, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Just on the vinyl side, side, if that'll be, you think it's gonna cost six hundred dollars?
There's some aluminum that's coming off the windows, which is allowing the rain to get into it. So to answer your question, um, I think it'll be less than that, but I didn't want to undercut myself and then come back and ask for more. So, um, I've been home in a really hot line, we're doing good with the spending, so. But it's been, it's been a few months, we're lucky we haven't had rain, but winter's coming, and I don't know if it was included or not, but Tom and I agree that when that gets done, I'm gonna do some gutter cleaning and pressure washing, and it's still a little too, it seems to get very dirty, uh, on the outside, so, um, so that's all gonna happen, in-house, obviously, as well.
Awesome. Um, regarding the Trails Committee, I mean, I understand we could, we could tell, we're spending seven hundred, whatever the total is, um, but I think outdoor stuff is probably more important than ever, and everyone is really good when you drive by about socially distancing, but I totally noticed since the announcement, or people found out that the, um, recreational spaces were opening, and they're definitely getting used. Um, that also, I would assume, gets some people off the road, in terms of exercising and just taking a walk on the road, um, we don't have a lot. We're getting more sidewalks, but we don't have that many, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to support that, if that makes sense.
Do we know if the Trails Committee got their audit for Bristol deployment before pandemic yet?
Uh, I'm not.
They contacted them.
They, they, they said they had decided what it was they needed, and.
So whenever I've worked with a school like that, they'll tell, like, they'll say, okay, if you buy the materials, we'll do it, and then work it into a curriculum some way. So I don't know, maybe that's on pause, because we don't know if schools are gonna open in the traditional sense, um, so, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, because this stuff looks like more, so there's some arrow markers, and then it looks like more stuff for the bench, and not so much the kiosk. I would assume what that means is, like you're saying, they're probably lack that put on hold, just because, like, there's, who's, who would be doing it?
They don't know, there's not even.
I didn't know if they had made any progress before.
Before, yeah, I can't remember what the timing was.
I remember the progress report we got, and they were very happy that they were, uh, working with the.
I definitely think the two groups connected, I'm just not, um, I'm not starting at the heart of past each other.
I'll reach out to him and ask, for sure, and get back to you on that. Um, so regarding the policy manual, so before we vote, uh, that was a real labor of love. Um, we did say, I, obviously, we can do it digitally, that will, it won't compete anybody, uh, everybody can get it digitally, no one's gonna sit here and say, oh, but this would impede their ability to, like, review the manual, they'll be able to do it. Um, I support it, just because I think, I just wanna have it done, um, we, that was our goal, we said we're gonna get it done, and then we're gonna get the initial copies found, hand them out, and then everything else will be digital after that, because it'll change probably. Um, so I don't see any objections to that.
I guess I do have some concern about that, myself, that at this time, given we don't know what the revenue's gonna be for the next fiscal year. So I'm a little, uh, concerned about spending that kind of money, it's five hundred and twenty dollars, uh, especially when everything is digital. And we're trying to.
For sure, yes, so. What do you think, Slavko?
How many pages are there?
Well, this is a few. On that page, okay. How?
Double sided or single sided?
It's probably.
Oh.
Sixty-something.
Oh, uh.
It's actually a really great.
Can we do this in-house piece field? When I say piece field, fifty copies, fifty, do we have any interns cutting in, by the way, this year?
It was funded about half, I mean, there's not, I don't, we're not, uh, really.
Do you have one to every current employee, how many do we need?
Hundred and fifty, and there's saddle stitch, which is like a, um, a booklet, I'm trying to look around, see if anybody has.
That's significant.
It will, yeah, and they'll see the staples inside, typically a soft cop, like a soft, um, oh, like your book, like the, uh, three hundred year anniversary, that's a saddle stitch.
Oh, really? What is, isn't that just?
It will be as like.
Two staples?
Yeah.
Two staples, okay, so it's not like a book, I was thinking.
Like a, like a handbook, you know, something that we would, like the open medium thing that I, like, it's.
But that would require a logic paper, if we tried to do it in-house, and that logic paper would be too logic. Is this going to be eight and a half by eleven?
Yes.
And so, if we save it a little bit, and we like this, but if we print it front and back, is there a problem with some of this?
But even then, like, I, if we're gonna, I wouldn't lose up all the paper, like, I think doing it electronically will, will fit the purpose for right now.
Oh, well, I don't have a problem with electronic, I'm just thinking that if there are, and it doesn't even have to be fifty, a few paper copies printed front and back.
Well, like, I was thinking, so what Mr. Monas is coming in, like, it would be nice to be able to, like, here's our, oh, your handbook, and here you go, um, read it.
I personally like to have it also, because I can put it with my stuff, and going down the road, if there's a question about something covered in the handbook, uh, it's a quick, it's a good reference.
And just one, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it gonna be mentioned in the, I mean, the final copy, like, the actual copy someone gets? Is there like a mention somewhere that, like, policies change, and like, you need to go online and like, keep up with it, and, okay.
Like, it says something about a living document, I think it says that it will be.
And you did, you tell me for when they publish a new bylaw, and then a few years later, it gets a doc, unchanged, and it stays in there. Um, if you ask for a copy of that bylaw, you see when it was written, but then it will say amended with a date. So, uh, online, obviously, it'd say, uh.
We have that in our, in the top part of all the policies, it will say, you know, what it's called, when it was effective, revisions made, and then like the latest date, so we try to keep track of that, yeah, absolutely.
Any further questions about just the policy manual? So what I think we should do is, since this is, so we have some disagreement on this one, let's take this one out, and vote on this one, and then we'll do the other ones together, is that okay with us?
Okay.
Um, so I will entertain motions regarding the town policy manual, uh, proposal, so for five hundred and twenty dollars, the printing in the binding. I guess not binding, I'm sorry, not binding.
What's the total amount for this whole page without that, do we know? Because you've got, we have labels, we reduced.
Could we have a, could we have like section totals, and then a grade total for going forward? I know this is the first time we put this on here, but do you know what I mean? Just each block gets a total, and then the grade total, would that be helpful?
Yes, because if we have it, we could say, okay, you know, I make a motion that we approve the following, uh, discretion, discretionary spending request. Council on Aging, X, Board of Health, X.
Yes.
And then that way we can do it, one motion.
And I just think, like, we're not gonna be able to tell, and maybe this, it, it should matter, but we're not gonna be able to really say the figure. Like, the public wouldn't be able to follow, and I know, they, they can see this document, but it, just for next time, it's all.
Well, last time we did that upper limit, um, so I'm just.
But I think if we know the prices, we should.
Yeah, I agree.
For example, the, the paper they were buying, that's, as he said, that's not a fix, that number, we're voting on is the cost.
Per case.
Per case, but we don't know how many cases we're gonna have, so even if he gives us a total figure, it's not gonna.
Okay, I see what you're saying, gotcha.
At least in this particular, I, yeah.
Except, except that it says open-ended, shouldn't be, because we're approving requests, so I would plug in, so many cases of each, and put a dollar down there, because if they're going to need more paper, and we're still on discretionary, they've gotta come back, discretionary, you don't need open-ended, we gotta come up with a number, we need a total for this.
Who orders this, is it you that?
Who orders the paper?
The paper, yeah.
They're in, uh, we, they monitor, like, the, the closet, they monitor the closet, people are supposed to say, hey, uh, your doctor won't case.
Yeah.
I don't mind that, as needed, because you, Karen, if somebody's, right, so somebody will be coming back this, every time they need, you know, the O and five boxes or whatever. And I, and Karen's reasonable, so I can't imagine.
But that's the point in coming up with a number, come up with a number of cases, your best guess, whether you base it on how many cases, what you use, or whatever, because you're requesting permission for discretionary spending, an open-ended item, how can you approve it? Remember, we get the, we're gonna be meeting with the finance committee, and to approve discretionary spending that is open-ended makes no sense at all. So, if, I don't know, ten cases of eight and a half by eleven, twenty cases, eight and a half by eleven, maybe we use that in a year, a month, excuse, a month, six months? Um, I, I just think we ought to have some quantity in there, so that we can put a total on this, and anyone looking at this sees that, uh, on this particular day, we approved all discretionary items up to whatever the total is. Um, and then if anybody needs anything else down the road, it will be a new request, but it will not be open-ended.
If you just did five cases, that would carry us for a long time.
Okay.
That's fine, I mean.
Especially, I mean, maybe a little more for eight, five eleven, whereas five, five.
I'm assuming you're gonna ask, you're gonna ask for like an extra case, and probably what you actually need going, that you don't want it to come back, because like, I could see an issue where, because what we were talking about is basic, like it's paper, we need paper, so we wouldn't wanna have a situation where we cut ourselves, and now we have to wait for a meeting, and then just to put the order.
And also, like, I don't know, this is approved, like, tomorrow doesn't mean we go order five cases of paper, or order like one or two, I have to look in there, it's a little low.
And then you ask us, again, if you're fed down to that one, okay.
That will get us to us knowing what's going on with the state and local.
Well, now that, let's assume you want the ten cases, you don't have to order regularly, you have permission to spend up to the dollar equivalent of ten cases, and when this board is approved, it is a number of total.
Come back, I'm so long.
And.
We can do that, we can do that.
Someday, when we get a state budget approved, you don't know what's happening.
Don't hold your breath.
This discretionary thing may go away, it depends on everything, that's beyond our control.
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to do our best at the time.
So if we put in number of cases.
I think we should do ten, for everything that says has needed, let's just do ten.
Yeah, it's, um.
I'm adding it up right now.
Thank you, so people like that, eleven by seventeen, do we need ten, or is that, is we gonna use that as?
Absolutely not.
As off.
But I wanna, I wanna come back to the, while Mad Administrator's doing the math, what about the policy manual? So Selectmen Pichiko, um, and you're right, like, I'm not, I agree with you, it's not, and I think Mad Administrator said that when she started, she said, we don't have, we don't have to print these. Um, but it was a goal, and, and we got the goal done. Um, so to that specific line, Adam, um, on our spreadsheet, what do we wanna do? I will entertain a motion just regarding the policy manual, and we can do the rest of them after.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we post the, uh, that we make the town policy manual available electronically, and that we print twenty copies in-house for distribution to the board and any new employees.
For a second, should we get a video on that? I missed that fly, I just didn't know a video.
So electronic won't have a cost for what?
Yeah, for twenty, the town, but the twenty paper.
Did we get both pricing, or it didn't matter, uh, for the printing? Is some, in my experience with printing, like, the more you do, the cheaper it is?
But I'm talking in-house, if it's only gonna be thirty-five pages, or a little copy, yeah.
We definitely need the ten cases of paper.
Okay, so then, so then I actually, if it's just gonna be in-house, we don't.
You just need to do the paper, you're gonna need to do the paper.
Yeah, okay, so.
So you said we don't need a motion?
No, because we, we're gonna get the paper, and then it's just, it's all done in-house, so it shouldn't cost.
It's already digital.
Yeah, yeah, and that's completely, that's just like, right?
It's all set, okay, we had to put it together so that we. It's all set, okay, we had to put it together so that we knew what to provide.
So I didn't second that motion, so.
Do you just want to defend it, if this is all...
Well, just fail.
No, no, you said you wanted us to act on it.
But that's before we had a...
Yeah, that was, we thought it was wrong, well...
Oh, no, no, my motion had no money in it.
Okay.
Okay, yes, yes, yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, what are we gonna do about the policy manual?
Right, and to print twenty copies of it.
So my motion is do it electronically and print twenty copies in-house.
Yeah, I will make a motion in a second, and after a five course. Um, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that we approve the request of the Fire Department, the Philly Department, the Highway Department, and Trails Committee. Uh, the request, uh, I don't know the numbers.
I do.
Add it to, but...
Uh, Fireway, Fireway, fire is a hundred, building is six hundred, I think, right? You don't need anything for that power watching meter. And then highway is three thousand four hundred and forty, digging trails is eight hundred nineteen and twenty-five, so...
My motion includes those figures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. We are missing, so what we haven't made motions are our COA, Health Department, Board of Selectment, and then, uh, the security system for the Titan Animal Shelter.
Right.
So I'm gonna make a motion that the, uh, COA, that we approve requests for two, up to two.
It's fifty-three million, if you wanna go to fifty-five.
It's twenty-nine ninety-nine, it should be almost sixty, it should be fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Fifty-nine, yeah, I'm sorry. I was two. Fifty-nine ninety-eight, that's, that's my fault, my nose.
No, it's gonna be sixty dollars and change. It's just under sixty dollars, twenty-nine ninety-eight, no, excuse me.
It's fifty-nine...
Fifty-nine ninety-eight.
Correct.
Motion in a second? Wait, which, which ones, was this...
This is for the two webcam accounts on any...
The two units, did, uh, did you...
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, and this is for up to two webcams. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
The board of health total is seventy-nine thirty-six, um, if you wanna do like an eighty-dollar roundup.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request of the Health Department, uh, for the wish to purchase in the amount of eighty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
If you order ten boxes ea, I just did ten boxes each, uh, excuse me, ten cases each. It is one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and two cents for the board's document administrative.
Right, and that was ten cases each?
Ten cases each.
Is this this whole section?
The whole section, aside from the policy manual, um, everything.
Okay, could you say that again please?
Yes, one thousand three hundred and ninety-six and two cents.
One thousand three hundred and ninety-six and two cents.
Is that only ten boxes of eleven by seventeen?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna use it.
Eventually, yeah. Maybe, none of us may even... So we had a motion that I believe, no, did we have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
Nope, we don't have anything, we have a total.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the discretionary spending for the, um, one selected town administrator. The amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and two cents.
Two cents, you said?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Oh, no, it's not animals, yeah.
And the last is the security system for the, uh, Titan Animal Shelter. And again, that total is four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Oh, no, oh my God, good catch, we totally did not, I wrote down a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and we never went back on that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the request of the town for discretionary spending in amount of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the, uh, contract to provide the, uh, alarm system wire install at the ACO facility to national security by alarms, the amount of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, yes, this is a tie, I will just say, and we have a discussion, this is obviously, you know, we're in a hard time, this is five thousand dollars. Uh, but we got a grant for the animal shelter, we used matching funds, um, it came out really nice, and I think we need to protect our investment on that. Uh, because Bordeaux's in ten or fifteen years, and we will not be approving another animal shelter. So, uh, I think that five thousand dollars to keep it safe and secure, I think, uh, is good enough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes as well. And Madam Administrator, that's it for the discretionary, uh, spending request?
Yes.
Do we have a cop point, are we, do you not, do you just take them right up until the, maybe that'll just don't came in, this quote came in today?
Well, I'm trying not to like delight service, so if I can put it in, I should, but really, there's, I don't wanna do about it. We, we made an announcement about it, so we're trying to accommodate people, we know people get busy, but it should be timely so that we can put it on. Like, we almost forgot these because they weren't actually, like, it helps us.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, um, because I know we're, we're doing it on a rolling basis, that it's, um, manageable from that, uh, point. Okay, good, so we went through the discretionary spending request, and now we're on to public input. Did we, um, so obviously nobody's here, um, but did we receive anything on Zoom or via phone or email?
I have nothing on Zoom.
Okay.
Although we do have one person listening in, so, um, not your chance for public in, but you can hear me. I got nothing.
Okay.
I suppose you're the second.
Yeah, no, just on the public input, I wanna congratulate the hundred and four graduates of Bristol County Biocultural High School. We have, of those a hundred and four, there are four, we'd like to mention their names, and congratulate them. Avery Allen, Liana Bai, Samantha Leaking, and Lyndon Cobb, congratulations, congratulations.
Plus the twenty-two. Thank you for sitting there and supporting us, because I know that...
I'm letting you sound wrong.
Uh, I would just comment, uh, Selectman Pichico and I were there, uh, it was, the program went very well. Uh, obviously, the, uh, it was well laid out, and rehearsals must have gone great because those kids knew exactly what to do. Uh, I didn't see, um, people walking around when we were moving as a group without masks, everything, it just, it just, well, I thought we did an excellent job.
And he kept his speeches down because of the heat, which is always good.
Uh, it's clear that, um, the administration of that school is highly respected by the district, so I'll put it at that. Your question about...
Any further, uh, any more public input, yes, sir?
Yeah, just a reminder about the devastation of nothing. Uh, we are gonna level the roads tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, structural repairs Monday, Tuesday, final coat. Next Thursday, Friday, all weather pending, weather patterns changing, so things might be, the, the whole neighborhood's been great. It has not been any causing a wave, no surprise, I don't even have a problem, everything's going smooth, but a reminder is, the end's not here yet.
I did get some positive feedback about the progress, and I think there are people in that, at least the people I know in that area are really excited about it, so thank you very much.
And just to follow up, um, I am in the process of preparing the agreements, uh, for the easements that we will be paying for, so if any of you are property or lis, are listening, then that was Mr. Ferry and me. Uh, I will be calling you to set a point, so you can sign the agreement and we can pay the easement money.
Thank you very much.
And the area's gonna have this tentatively weather pending still, the Pearl Street devastation's gonna happen in the first week of August.
Okay.
That'll be the sidewalk connection from School Street to One Boulevard.
Is that with, that was part, I, that was my question, so that's part of the complete streets program?
Right, so we do have an active first, that's daily admin, we have residents at the Rockland Street, but, uh, we gotta ramp up that, I'll be communicating with Karen in the end to get some Facebook stuff out.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've gotten response on that, I think people like the communications, thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further input, and since we already did our schedule announcements, uh, we will go to the town administrator report. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
So more street stuff, the NCT put out some more funding for, um, they're calling it the Shared Streets and Shared Spaces Program. There was a COVID aspect to this, but they were also asking for permanent solutions that could be put into place within thirty days. So we rolled the dice, I talked about this, I'm pretty soon about doing the day one, next school, day one, the driveway, but they, they didn't fit that, wasn't, uh, I mean, I think it fits, but they disagree. So we, uh, we submitted two applications, one was for the Titan Middle School entryway sidewalk that has, uh, considerable deficiencies. Uh, I really came in hot over the fact that it was highlighted in our supplemental evaluation and transition plan, that it solves a critical problem, that it serves as a parent drop-off, which is a, um, goal of this program. Uh, it's specifically stated, uh, and then that it had some other things. So I sent that in about two weeks ago, the deadline, they say that they'll respond to you within two weeks, so that's on Friday, hopefully we get some good news. I sent another one in early this morning, and this is, uh, actually project number two on our Complete Streets prioritization plan that we shaved off on our Complete Streets application, uh, which we were awarded. And, uh, Mr. Ferry and I went down, we took some pictures, took a look at the site, it's a little bit of a tricky thing to explain on paper because it's an intersection with three locations, one of which is Somerset Ave, but it's not one thirty-eight. Um, at that point, County Street is a little bit further, so, uh, hopefully we did a good job explaining what we're doing, I added an app so that people could see. Um, but this is really, in my opinion, what the Shared Spaces Program's all about, connecting neighborhoods to local commercial centers. There happens to be a post office and daycare, up two playgrounds, a library, the, the fire department, uh, that's our commercial area for the most part in the center of town. Uh, so I thought we did a decent job about explaining that, there are some AD8 appliance issues, uh, but there's also some severe lacking in sidewalks, there's no curb protection. So, uh, we spent some time on that, I think Mr. Ferry has helped there. I did reach out to, um, Representative Padgett, hope that she puts in a good word for those projects. Um, if anybody may have seen, we publicized this too too much, but the first round of awards for this program was provided, uh, this, this past week, they, they announced it. And there were no Bristol County towns on it, which is disappointing to me. Uh, so hopefully that works in our favor, and we can be one of the first communities in Bristol County to take advantage of this program. So, to be continued on those, fingers crossed, we are allowed up to three applications, um, and we did our two so far.
Good work.
So that's that, the next item on my report is to sign an agreement for MetroSpec, MetroSpec does our IT, this is a two-year program, um, excuse me, a two-year contract that I'm requesting. There is not much updated in this agreement from the previous one that you said we'd be signing, other than we put the addresses of the Public Safety Building on here to be included. Um, and then because of that, I did increase the contract amount to eight thousand dollars, and anything over the level would require some further action. I didn't anticipate that at all, we did all the heavy lifting already, barring something totally breaking down and catching on fire, we want, so...
You mean the...
Like the network itself, like the service network, like all of that heavy work that we were behind, it's all been done, so this is just monitoring our, our network.
So can I ask you a question about that?
Do you know, that's...
Do you have a chair, I'm sorry? Okay, you're okay.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to go to you guys, but I had, I had written something down to your point, which was the maximum allowable payment within this contract shall not exceed the total payment of eight thousand dollars. So my first question to you was, what was expended over the course of the previous contract? And then I know there was a lot of heavy lifting, as you said, because we didn't have like everything in terms of continuity on one single network, and everybody was kind of doing their own thing on their own computer, so wouldn't we expect to expend less? I'm not arguing with the limit, should we?
No, I, I know what you mean, so we...
Do you get what I'm saying?
Yes, so we spent way more than five thousand dollars, we spent money for COVID, which we put on the care stuff, um, I'm gonna work backwards. We got a special article to do some other network upgrades, we purchased switches and Wi-Fi stuff and watchtower and all sorts of things, um, through special articles and regular funds and upgrading...
That wasn't, that wasn't...
That's correct, no, the contract was really about his work, like if he needed to go in there and fix Selectman Pichico's email because of problem arose, uh, arose, excuse me, that's what that was for. So it's, we spent a lot, a lot of money, um, but it was from multiple pots, I guess, special articles.
And a lot of it was to get the network established and to get everyone, I don't even know what the right word is, like on the same...
We got rid of a lot of like junk, we made sure that we were all on a server, being backed up regularly, a secure, a server that was secure, that will pan out and not fail us. Um, because before I even arrived here, there were some special article funds for a new server, we finally took care of that. We upgraded our Wi-Fi capabilities, solved some problems that cable had been having, um, really just overhauled it. And the fact that we did that allowed us to pivot quite gracefully into a remote functional workspace, uh, in COVID-19 time, so it was money well spent. And I think the, some things went under budget, so, um, we did return money, two of those articles that went back to the...
Do you have any questions?
My question is the same as you always, because I'm, it was the last time, I'm satisfied with what you said.
Selectman Blue?
But, no.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, eight thousand dollars is not, nothing, um, but in terms of just the service that I've seen, like, because Selectman Blue, we were elected before everything was on the same network, and everything was nice and wrapped up in the nice flow.
Well, if you was ready then.
Correct, so, um, I, I definitely think that it has been just pun intended and... So, that's all I'll say on that. Uh, any further input on that? Okay, I will entertain motions pursuant to the services agreement between the town of Titan and MetroSpec.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve and sign the contract with MetroSpec.
I'll second that motion.
Give the amount of eight thousand dollars, uh, for FY twenty-one.
Oh, well, it's two years.
In twenty-two, in twenty-two.
This is Georgia, yeah.
Well, it'll be extended, you know what, just do the one year, because eight thousand's on it for two years.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just do the, that's a mistake for me.
Gotcha.
And we can't really turn this down, we have to be...
So I thought eight thousand was for two years, it's not two years.
No, no, no.
It was every...
It's every building, though, every, including Council on Aging at Lincoln Village, including...
But it was the thing last year to his, to Selectman Pichico, like it was all of a sudden, wasn't it five thousand last contract?
It was five thousand last contract, I updated because we added a Public Safety Building, three buildings, not a lot of buildings.
Yeah, but to his thing, was that for just the first year of that contract, or was that for both years? The five thousand, wasn't that your question?
One year.
It was one year.
Oh, okay, this is the first time you're...
Yeah, when I started, we had that other company that we had since that fell, it's been a great improvement. I did think eight thousand for two years was pretty good deal, so...
Yeah, excellent deal.
You know, right, but I do understand you, you actually want buildings, buildings to, so I understand why there's an extra cost, so I'll second the, the motion, the completed motion.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I'm sorry, that's it, I was writing a note to myself.
So I wanted to give, it's not even like an update, but, I actually want to give a, because it's not really like an update, but we did get some correspondence from the CCC, did you just wanna...
Sure, I'll, um...
What that correspondence was.
Sure, um, so the CCC, the Campus Control Commission of the State emailed us and said that the facility located at Two Hundred Boulevard Street, you know, hey, here's all of their information about it, can you please verify that they're... Can you please verify that they're adequately permitted and doing work in your community, we've ever credited it were, and then sent that on. So this is just another benchmark in the whole process to be permitted for a licensing facility, and they still do need order book permits, final occupancy, I mean, none of that goes out. I, they told me that the stormwater permit was granted, so if that's not the case, I do need to know that, but I was told it's all set.
Okay, I'm sorry, you know more than I do.
They have a building permit, so you can rest assured that they have it stolen.
Okay.
So.
So the last step is?
Well, they have like final occupancy and all, once they're ready to go, then through our post-community agreement, they work with the police department, police get a walkthrough, make sure they're all set with it, and also with security, and then when SaaS signs off, occupancy is good, firemen and all that good stuff.
And the retail sales permit before that, at some point.
So they, we actually did two different post-community agreements, one for them there on the park, and one for the recreational, so they do have the option to open up one first, they don't have to open up both together.
Oh, okay, okay, well, that is finally good news, yeah.
So regarding the good news, should they have been shared with the other board members? I saw this on Facebook, right, first we came aware of this, so I'm just wondering, the board. I know Mrs. Schoolock is not on Facebook, so she may not have seen it, but I saw it, it was kind of taking back a little bit on that side.
So I didn't know if you shared on Facebook, and I did not post that, I, it said Chief Executive Officer of the town has to sign it, and that would be the chairman of the board, so I sent it to him, signed it. I don't want to be holding up anybody's permit process, so I sent it along, but I didn't have anything to do with the stuff.
Yes, to your point, yes, it should have been sent to you both first, and I will do that, but my point would be, so, I thought about putting it on the Town of Dayton page, but I just thought that it wasn't something that we had spoken about and had cleared, like in terms of releasing, like, I know it wasn't really an opinion, I was just saying what it was, but it probably should have went to you two first. But I did use the Town of Dayton page, I did it on my own, but going forward as a courtesy, absolutely, I would send it to you first.
Where are we, didn't we have a second one somewhere, or discussed the second one?
Yes, it was supposed to go in the mill at six twenty Spring Street, and the former owners ended up selling the mill at auction.
So that?
Did not add or pan out.
Potential tenant doesn't have a spot?
No, I mean, I did put that person in touch with the new owners, so that they could continue, but I don't think that that panned out. We actually did speak with them yesterday, was it yesterday or what, about what their plans are for the mill, it was a great conversation, I thought. There, it's preliminary, but they're focusing on rehabbing and kind of a facade, you know, giving it a facelift a bit before going forward, but we talked about great, you know, ideas, shared ideas. They wanted to hire a local landscaper, so I gave some names of the businesses, if you're a landscaper, I'll pass on your information to them, so maybe you know. They were interested in trying to find the best fit companies to go there, so it was a worthwhile conversation. I had reached out to the Chamber of Commerce before the pandemic hit, this building was purchased at auction, probably like two weeks before, if that, before everything shut down. So it was nicely able to connect and kind of finalize for getting going on what we had started way back then.
Who is the model, they used to be tires.
It's a group called the Feeney Brothers, what they do is like a construction pipe fitting thing, that I guess they have some sort of real estate part of their company, so it's pretty massive.
Are they from Massachusetts or?
Yes, they're from Massachusetts, I want to say Boston area, north, north, and we're dealing with the real estate function of that company.
How many viable businesses are currently in that building? I know of one.
Quite a bit.
They, they only have a very small percentage vacant, however, their largest tenant is about to leave, which is Drake, so that would probably, just a best guess, believe sixty percent of them are vacant at that point, maybe more. As far as I know, based on yesterday's discussion, the tenants who are in there, watch remain, they're just concerned with the drink of APC, obviously, and they're also concerned with what the market will bear. So we had some pretty healthy discussions yesterday, I feel, I'm sorry, I feel they have some viable plans, it's a little bit fluid, because they don't know what the market's gonna do, especially post-COVID. So I think it still is in the works, but I think they want to make investment in the community, which is good for all of us.
When I was in Maine a couple of weeks ago, and came down to backwards on the hand check, but also when I go to Fall River and look at those mills, is there any thought to turning that, some of that space into professional offices? For example, the large Boston hospitals, MGH, bringing women's, Beth Israel Lady, I noticed they've got these care facilities popping up everywhere, they, and there always seems to be something going on, there always seems to be a need for a medical facility where you can go in, and obviously it's not an ER, but it's safe, you get the ER access.
I had emails him, and I said, that's something that is lacking in this area, we don't have our own, like an urgent care or a pop-in.
That's what I'm thinking of, and I saw in Maine and New Hampshire, I saw these, I'll call them old drugstores chains, that converted, it just says urgent care, and it's the same sign, and I realized they were in a number of states.
I would say they sound like conversation melting off the table, they were sort of concerned about the best fit, which, we did talk about the amenities of the building, there are some drawbacks, obviously aesthetically, but TMLP is great internet, so a software company, app builder, you know, office space.
When you look at those old mills in Fall River, even when you go into them, you know they were old mill, but they are beautiful, and it's great professional space.
Yep, they also talked about spinning off some of the out parcels that they own for redevelopment, so as I said, it was a good discussion.
Not good.
Is that it?
That's it? Well, off topic, I'm sorry, I was excited about that meeting, but it was good.
Okay, under old business, we have reviewed and approved the business guide, I know Selecting Who Art had some content changes specifically to storm water, and so I assume we had included all those, correct?
I took all of the changes and I, for the interest of saving paper, we didn't put the entire business card in, but this was considerably changed, mostly this second paragraph, why is managing, I mean, second section, why is the building storm water? I literally read everything that you wrote next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fine.
I went through it, and I really liked it, because I was able to go back and see what it was before the changes, and I thought it was a lot better. I liked the part that you included, no one is exempt from EPA, do you see stormwater relations, in case you thought you heard and you're not. So, I thought it really made this section, I'm obviously not a stormwater expert, I don't play one on TV and don't pretend to be here, and so I really appreciated between your edits, Health Agent Pillings edits, and the Building Commissioner's edits, I think it made it a better document.
Ten contrib, contributions from the EPA, because some of that stuff that you read, that's right off their website.
Oh, and then the other section, it, not that I liked it, but I could see where some of the content was incorrect, and so where you wrote, they'll advise you of the fees, because they're based on square footage, I assume that that's part of it.
Yeah, they've changed since they were set the first time, they, obviously.
So, no, I thought it was very thoughtful, and I appreciate it, so thank you. Was there anything else, Madam Administrator?
There were some in other sections, grammatical, stylistic changes, so other than that, nothing of like, I wouldn't call, I don't mean this in any sort of derogatory, but like nothing substantial of like substance that would alter.
Like incorrect.
Yeah, it wouldn't alter the meaning of what you previously.
It needs, it just needs some fine tuning, and quite frankly, after a resident made a comment, oh, it needs another look, but didn't tell us, I did the look, so, yeah, it, it. Unlike the stormwater section, there were no major changes that I found, so it just needs a couple of, a few fine tunes, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay. Anything from you, Selecting Who Art?
No, Mrs. Schoolock is satisfied with the stormwater.
Okay, so I will entertain motions regarding the business guide.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the business guide with a few fine tuning items that I gave to the TA.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, when we were ordering all those supplies, there were no red pants on them.
Last, next, August twelfth.
August twelfth, we did a good, first.
They're possibly mailing them to your.
That's right, I buy them, bros.
And hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that will pass. Which is?
I have a change, we'll have to.
Yeah. Okay, so that is awesome, and the edited version will get on the website with all the changes, so we will do that. Next, we have an award on the HVAC contract. Madam Administrator, and I'm sure we will give the floor to the Building Commissioner as well, and the comments he might have, did you want to start us off?
Yes, please, thank you, we wrote a bid scope, published it after the last meeting that you had.
I didn't, I hate cutting you off, can you just start back, because I feel like not everyone watches our meetings, like we really need to get out of practice, let's start with why this is even on here, make a little watch coming.
I mean, where are we sitting?
Well, it's two people.
Sweet, sweet, I'm sure we're great, so.
Everyone.
The HVAC system at Town Hall broke about a month ago, and we were here requesting that you allow us to uncover some funds to fix it. So we got that vote, we write our bid scope, we advertise it, and then the other, another one broke, so we write in the dendome, thank God, you know, we could, we were able to just pivot and go forward. We solicited our three coaches, posted a combat, did everything we're supposed to do, we got great response, healthy response from companies that we haven't normally worked with, so that's always fun. But we got a healthy bid, and the low bidder, we're excited to work with her, it's a female-owned company, which is, which is always good, we're supposed to, we're gonna do that all up, so that's good. And it's our, I'll let you speak, oh, I'll yield the floor if you have anything, but I, our recommendation is to award the contractor Jet Professional Group LLC of Centerville an amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Do you want to start by telling us how much you thought it was gonna be?
Sure, sure.
You're on the floor.
So, so yeah, I'm equally as impressed, I anticipated, almost all the contractors I talked with are super busy, so I thought that this price would be almost double what it was, at least around forty thousand dollars. So, to see this price, and I scrutinized every one of them, the equipment that's being proposed in this is top of the line, it's trained, ninety-seven percent efficient. The air conditioning unit is eighteen SEER, which is almost the best on the market today, so I don't have any qualms with awarding this bid to Jet. They seem to be, they have a business legitimate, licensed, a little background, everything checks out, so we hope that once you award it, we have a working relationship with them, and we'll get what we need. For almost, at least forty percent less than we thought it was, so that'll be great, so I'll probably come back to you and ask to do the other two.
Exactly.
We can afford it.
This is one unit?
This is two.
This is two units?
Two units, which is why we were so blown away, because we thought this would be the cost of one, so we're very excited about that, and I asked her, you know, what the time, obviously time matters right now because it's been so hot. So the technician, she said it'd be on Monday, we didn't hear a contract, I believe it's here for you to sign if you approve this, and we'll just get going, SaaS is what's going, provides a movie. I also want to get rid of these portable units, because they're soaking up a lot of energy, our bill was.
So, there's one more that's on the way up?
There's four units total at Town Hall.
Right.
Two of the units are in front of you tonight.
Right.
The other two units are the same age as the other units, there's one that's slightly younger that runs the vault, so that unit may be able to be salvaged, but the third unit is the same exact age as these two.
Will we have to bid again, or can we extend, or can't extend on this because of the dog?
Exactly, it would have been a sealed bid, but I think it's a little cold process.
Okay, should we keep our eye on this and maybe revisit this again before we go to another town meeting or something?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Meaning the other two parts that we're not replacing.
I'd like to see how these two react, I'd like to, we are moving forward with the Green Communities projects, with the Wi-Fi thermostat, so it's still working, and we have portable units, if it goes down, we can react much quicker than we did before. But I would like to use this opportunity to preemptively deal with the other units.
I think you're never gonna get an argument out of me for being proactive, so, I think that, because you know what, I just want to say this, so, what I'm envisioning, why I'm asking to revisit this, is because I could see, we've had bad luck, unfortunately. Like, we have a pandemic, and then we had a bad luck, and we don't want those units to go down before like winter, cold weather comes, and then there's a heat issue after we just dealt with the lack of air conditioning.
Good point, because we don't have heaters, so.
Exactly, portable STC.
That's a layer spring.
Which, which though.
Yeah, there we go.
So I agree that we should wait to see how this works out, if we're satisfied with products, then we have to revisit this.
Train is also a company that did the schools, really cool stuff.
Yeah, that acronym sounds very good.
Nothing starts a train.
Is that their, is that their?
That's a good, that's a good play.
I just thought it was a good play.
I know, I was like, oh, just go to the market.
So here, I have no further discussion, so I am happy to entertain motions, and if we want to continue discussion after a second, we can.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the bid to provide two train heating slash air conditioning units to Jet Professional Group LLC, Centerville, Mass. And for the total price installed, uh, twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, and under discussion, I just wanted to say to the Building Commissioner and to our Town Administrator, and just thank you for making this a priority, I know it's like, was a lot of headaches for you, I'm sure, but I know it's appreciated, so.
Mr., addendum number one, there is one no listed, why, why would there be a no there, what does that mean?
That means that they didn't reference or acknowledge that they, that the addendum was there, now he did provide a quote for two, so I know he saw it, it's just he didn't reference or acknowledge receipt of addendum one, you have to acknowledge all receipt.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next, we have a vote on the list of surplus items for auction, and I believe Mrs. Brady gave us a list. Mr. Commissioner, you have the floor, sir, I know you prepared the list and we appreciate it.
Sure, okay, so Tom Ferry is an integral part of this too, because he's the one that usually creates all surplus equipment, or at least most of it. But we had great success last year with the auction, the Town Administrator and I discussed that we should do this and keep up with the surplus equipment that becomes available, get it back out into the market, generate some revenue, and we don't have an accumulation of stuff. So I believe we're gonna try to do this every year, so needed, we went through the list, I have before you a partial list, and I say partial because I found out there's a few more vehicles that are gonna become surplus within the next few weeks. So I expressed to the Administrator Aristine that I'd like to delay the auction slightly, so that I can include all of those vehicles, any other equipment that becomes available, Tom may have some, some stuff that becomes available through all of his road work. So if you're willing, I'd like to do that, get everything on the same auction, and then at least we'll go into the winter with nothing on hand. So that said, the list I have before you is the list that I have verified, compiled, I have all the titles available for all those vehicles, so we shouldn't have any issues selling them, people registering them, if they so choose. I also understand that there may be some previous items that you've already acted on, which are not on that list before you, correct?
Correct. But we know of them because this is a police cruiser and you did it one week ago in the meeting for that police and fire. And then some others.
Right. So this list before you needs to be acted on as written. That'll bring us up to date with all the surplus equipment that we're aware of. Anything new that comes before me, I'll bring to you, and then we'll decide to have, we'll place the auction.
Okay. Are you going to, do, do you want to do that piecemeal, or you'll just wait to hear back?
I, what I. I don't want this to drag on, so I think, I think the fire chief is waiting for a vehicle to come in, which should be here in the next couple of weeks. Tom and I have been in discussions about what he has. So I think within the next two, maybe three weeks, we'll have the remainder of the list.
We're also gonna put the house, the structure, 9497, onto this auction. We went down the scope road and it just was a mess, so this will be much cleaner, much easier.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you, sir. Anything you wanted to add?
Nope, we're just requesting that this list before you declare surplus and to dispose of the vestiges of.
As prepared. Any questions before we enter, before.
These items here, like, for example, Great Dane, Sixty Eight More, 2009, is still working, but we're going to.
No, you got a new mower. Isn't that one?
That one was on, sir, it was replaced, so it's available. So if we approve this, doesn't mean we're now going to have to start buying more stuff. We've already. Already replaced. This stuff has been replaced.
Correct.
Oh, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah, that was where we.
That's it?
Question.
So I think we're live. Did you have anything before we?
So all of the items approved at Town Meeting, equipment wise, have they been ordered?
Yes.
Fire police, do you know?
Yes.
Fire, we have the car.
Yes, on, yes, on police.
Yes, on police. Okay, so they're coming in now.
Okay. Any further input?
You'll have, have a, the final list of our August 12th meeting, so we can go around some of this.
With the second August meeting?
August 12th is just two weeks away, right?
Yeah, that's tough. Let me get this.
Three weeks. Three weeks?
Twenty-nine.
It is twenty-seven.
So basically, so that it's twenty-nine.
The 26th of August is the second.
So the only one that might not be is the fire department because they are still using the vehicle and can't dispose of it until anyone comes in. I, I think that's the only one that might. So to answer your question by the twelfth, I think we should have a list with the exception of the fire department vehicle. So we could certainly follow in setting the auction, and then that vehicle could just be pushed in, you know, before it actually goes live.
Just the other time, I'm sure I'm correct on this, but the Jamesburgs' house, because I think the six months, demolition delay is coming up. Some of those lawyers, we're going to obviously pull off on that. We're going to have the auction and we'll decide what's going to happen with the building after the auction. So when I run.
Well, if, if somebody buys it, they can get it, right?
Yes, but I just want to make sure that.
Oh, it doesn't get demolished?
Doesn't get demolished, sorry.
Oh, okay.
But I can tell you this, if it doesn't sell, it's probably going to get demolished.
No, I, I get that. This, this is the one opportunity for us to save the building.
Absolutely.
Just want to make it clear.
I submit a second motion.
Short?
Only a second motion.
Okay. What, we need to say, Madam Administrator? Are you sure?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I want that we approve all of the items on this list. And declare them surplus and add them to the list that's already in place for auction for a date to be set later on.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So it's understood that we have a couple of items that aren't on the list that we've already declared surplus. We're going to add this to it, and when we have a complete list, we will set the auction date.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I made a motion that we add the house located at 949, Somerset Avenue, is that the right number?
Yes.
To the list of surplus property and that we delay the demolition of the building until the outcome of the auction is known.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Next, we have to, or we're going to consider rescinding the vote to appoint James Aguirre, Building Commissioner, and Glenn Hathaway Assistant Building Inspector as fence viewers. And that's because it's usually the board of assessors, right?
Here, yes.
Yes, in this, in this.
It's the board of assessors.
I shall move.
I'm not seeing, did we get to see?
Oh, you kept seeing.
Oh my God, we did. You know what? That's, I apologize. I crossed it off as we were going to it in that quantity to completely skip it, so I apologize.
Can you have them let it resign?
Nope, you stay on. Well, he is actually doing, yeah, I've actually heard this.
He's still having stuff.
Yeah. So unfortunately, I'm going to entertain motions to accept the resignation of Service Commissioner Laura Curtis.
So.
Second motion.
With thanks and appreciation?
Yes, with best services and best wishes.
Absolutely. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes.
Mr. Fred Rino, who serves on the planning board, is the planning board's representative for sure right now. I have not had the opportunity to ask him if he would consider kind of doing that, or do you need to, if it's still lacking as well. But I just wanted to let you know, are you okay if I ask him?
I would love that. I actually, when I got, when I read it in the packet, I thought that we would, part one was that, accepting the resignation, and part two was appointing him. But obviously, he wanted to make sure he's willing to serve, so we will do that.
Uh, I can tell you at the planning board meeting, they did appoint him and he said he would serve.
As the selectman's representative as well?
Or as the planning board.
Oh, the planning board.
Yes. So we have, we had previously, Mr. Rogers doing it.
Doing it, definitely.
That would just surprise him. That would just surprise him.
Um, okay, so next, we want to consider rescinding the vote to appoint James Aguirre and Assistant Building Inspector Glenn Hathaway as fence viewers.
I shall move.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, and just noting that there are three fence viewers. Eric Kisterday, who was recently elected to the Board of Assessors at the last election, was appointed. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. And I'm sure you are excited to have that.
So I would love to draw all the phone calls out of the wall.
Drop the folder.
Make sure I get the email address.
So when you go out there and find out it's a boundary dispute, you can say, not much.
Yeah, exactly.
We're going to rattle them to you.
So, and last for appointments is to appoint Nancy Gulat to the Greater Attleboro Town Housing Consortium. Do we have a motion? I will step down and second that motion. Any discussion? Willing to serve, I assume?
Yeah, notice all the volunteers.
Yes.
Depends to that.
It is important, though. I learned a lot about that program. It's how good it is for first-time homeowners.
And the number is $25,000, up to 25 now for a first time.
That is nothing to talk about.
Homeowner. To help with both closing costs and down payment. That's nice.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Chunk of money.
If you're listening, this is, we will contact if you are interested in your first-time homeowner and you are eligible. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions, it's my appointment.
Yep. Noted. That passes. Congratulations. Next, under Selectmen's Reports, these selectmen are going to give their quarterly updates on the Board of Selectmen's five-year plan. Selectmen Pichico, did you want to start us off?
So I have two, my five-year plan has two goals, a new library as well as making all our town buildings, if we pay you a plan. We got a new library. We are still waiting for the renovations, for like Andrew County, we're going for a library. We have another fourteen on the list. As I've noted in the past, I do not favor spending up to $4,000, I share the cost to renovate the library. I am in favor of a new library, new library, which I believe will be cheaper. I'm also in favor of the town saving each year a fair amount of our free cash for the town's future capital projects so that there's a smaller impact on our taxes. Given the results of the pandemic and the loss of revenue, at this time, we are not in a position to build a new library. However, the residents of Dyne deserve a new library. Board of Selectmen will be meeting with the library trustees soon to discuss the library. The library trustees have created a strategic planning committee. The Town Administrator and as well as myself was on this committee. You can call, and the work is complete. Once we receive the plan, we will not receive that plan. Is that clear?
Uh, the library director may have this. They may have just sent it right to her.
And this might understand that library trustees will be sending that to the Board of Selectmen. The Dyne Library is open for pickup. Pick up. You can call the library to place your orders. Use the sales mobile, mobile app or place your request using the form that's on your website. We have also accepted all library attorneys through the properties. Please call the library by the way 6696421 or email, all small caps, d i at salesinc.org. We have a lot of digital, digital resources that are available for people to use at home, for all pages and interests. The website has been updated. Hopefully, it is easier to use and find the resources that you may, that may be interested. The Kids and Teens page has also been updated. They have new resources on them. We have been trying to keep communications up through the Facebook pages, the main library, the Dyne Youth Page, the website, the library, dynelibraries.org, where you can access all the visual resources there concerning. But with newsletters, Miss Laurie has been posting, you may have seen on Facebook, posting storytimes on the Dyne Youth Facebook page. Dyne, our technical is ADA client in December. Dyne was awarded a $30,000 ADA Self-Valuation Transition Plan, grant for the focus of disabilities to assist the town in removing barriers and improving accessibility to all of town residents. The grant provides funds to aid the self into review of all town buildings, and provides us with blueprints to be forward with their recommended improvements. The evaluation is complete. Shall we share with the board? The board hasn't given that.
I may have been able to, but you have a current copy. I just want to lay off this, but.
I don't know. I don't think I've seen that.
I don't think it's going to change.
You don't?
Yeah.
It, it, no one's upset, just.
No, I, I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember a conversation you and I had. Jonathan's going to be involved to present that, right?
Yes, that's, yeah. Soon our ADA coordinator will go over the plan with us, so.
Oh, okay.
I had him sitting down with us. We'll see if everybody gets a copy of it, so we can review it, so if you have any questions, we got here. And once we have a call with the ADA Commission, we will prioritize, prioritize the projects as well as discuss grants that are available. These improvements will not happen overnight, but will be part of our five-year plan. Again, I would like to thank Jonathan Gale, our ADA Coordinator, and Valerie Aristine, all the help in getting the grant.
Can I ask you a question? Um, you'll let us know when the ADA Coordinator just, like, wants to come and do that presentation?
I may not be at the August 12th meeting. I know that he's not available this week, but it's my understanding he wants to sit down with myself as well as sit down with me for the next week. I don't know if this, I told you, let's sit down, I know. But when he's down there for us, should probably actually bring it to the board. I know it's tight, especially.
He says okay. I, I'll watch him as well.
I'll see when he's available.
So maybe like the 26th technically?
Could be the 26th. It depends on if he has some grants that do so.
Last year, it was the end of August that they came out, so. It's taken long.
Well, it's up, you guys can.
Yeah, we don't have the ball.
And anytime you ask it, we'll be, I will put it on the agenda. I just ask that we do it for the sake of Mr. Gale's time, that we do it under scheduled appointments, so like, he's in and out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to read my blurb, and then we're going to hear sourcing Gulat's updates on fire and highway. Uh, first is Town Hall renovations. It's a bit of a recap because we discussed this at our last meeting. At the annual town meeting in Ju, I mostly typed this up for the record, so you have it. At the annual town meeting in June 2020, at the recommendation of both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and the Building Commissioner. Uh, the residents of Dyne approved $75,000 to partially renovate Town Hall. The remaining funds of the initial $165,000 request was deferred to the special town meeting in the fall with a tentative commitment to get that, rest of that funding, if it's available. At the July 8, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to repurpose use of the Town Hall hearings room, otherwise known as the Selectmen's Meeting Room, as office space once renovated. The Selectmen agreed to conduct meetings in the old Town Hall upstairs meeting room where we are right now and to support the Cable Television Committee as they upgrade the necessary technology required to permit live streaming of news from this room. Uh, rather than having the Town Accountants Office relocated to the lower level of Town Hall as was indicated in the original project plans, the Board of Selectmen were in agreement with Building Commissioner James Aguirre that it may be more efficient to repurpose the Town Hall hearings room and possibly leave the Accounts Office either where it is or on the first floor of the upper level of Town Hall. Given the Board of Selectmen's vote to repurpose the Town Hall hearings room, Commissioner Aguirre is working on updating the previous project plans and will present them to the Board of Selectmen at a meeting in the future. That's correct, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. I always say that to the Town Administrator. Please do not be shy about that. Sewer expansion, the purpose of the project, of this project is to boost commercial economic growth in town. And just to note for the Town Hall renovation, I didn't write it, but the purpose of that project is we have some crowding. Obviously, with the pandemic, it's heightened the urgency to alleviate that crowding. So we want to boost commercial economic growth in town. And so myself and the Town Administrator, Aaron Steen, met with consultants Lauren Hertel and Matthew Head of the firm Woodard &amp; Curran on July 14th to discuss, to further discuss potential funding sources for the sewer expansion project down Route 138. The possibility of utilizing the state revolving fund or SRF loan program was discussed extensively. The consultants proposed obtaining, I shouldn't say proposed, we discussed obtaining an interest-free SRF loan to fund the project. This would have included, possibly included, highway department personnel needing to install and connect sewer infrastructure, such as like sewer lines and pump stations. They projected that that would have saved approximately 50% of the projected project cost, but we sort of determined internally that that option isn't viable. They have regular jobs to maintain the roads. And even though they could have been capable of doing that, we think there could be better funding ways. So that brought up the possibility of utilizing funding through the Economic Development Administration's Public Works Program. Uh, it was agreed that Town Administrator, Town Administrator Aaron Steen or myself, whoever, would reach out to the program's regional representative in order to determine if our proposed sewer extension project is worthy of an application or not. So sort of like a free eligibility screen, because what has happened to me is, we write all this stuff, and I've totally done this, wrote a whole proposal, and then got feedback from someone in the program that said, you're not eligible. So that work was not, you know, was not.
I know that too.
It's correct. Just sort of putting the horse before the car on this one. And so the tentative plan, if we're deemed eligible preliminarily, uh, is to explain our project in an application while also highlighting sort of the bigger picture of our community. And what I mean is a more holistic view, taking into consideration infrastructure projects that are needed. We discussed the new library. Selectmen Gulat will go over what's needed for the highway garage and also a possible either new fire station or, at the very least, an expansion. Town Administrator Aaron Steen or myself will reach out to State Representative Pat Haddad as well for any potential assistance that we can garner regarding the ADA Public Works Program. So we will keep you updated on that. And lastly, there was a discussion focused around the Town Area Chamber of Commerce. Uh, and you have been very pivotal, pivotal man of the Administrator in sort of emphasizing, at least with me, the need to partner with them and why it's so important. And so a question was raised at the meeting about whether or not local commercial businesses would, maybe my phrasing is not, would help pay, that's probably not the right word, would buy in, I guess, to help expand sewer down Route 138 because that would obviously help them in no, no small amount anyway. Uh, and so the reason why we raised that question is because small businesses having to. And so the reason why we raised that question is because small businesses having to invest in septic installation has proven, as we can see, to be somewhat business prohibitive in Dyton, and so, and a little bit helps. And so we're going to reach out to the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce for additional ideas and also about the possibility of obtaining a little bit of buy-in on the sewer expansion from the local business community and maybe just good ideas about one other. We are not the only small community that is struggling to both attract businesses and retain businesses, so it's nice that we can put our feelers out through this Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. And so we'll keep everyone updated on this. Anything you wanted to add? Because I know you've been writing instrumental links as well.
I just wanted to highlight what exactly that feasibility study provided us. So we do have a plan that would provide three sewer sheds. And the hardest piece to like really find the funding for is the first piece. That is the first step to it. So we've tried many, many avenues, and the key is really to have some specific businesses signed on. The other two sewer sheds can be done through MVP action grants, can be done through environmental grants, things for clean water. So those sort of are a shoe-in. It's just that first spot. So we're working hard on it. It is not something that can be borne solely by the taxpayer, so it won't be something born totally by the taxpayer.
And that's why.
And that's why we're at the John Gorman, looking for other things.
Thank you, Madam President. Selecting Blue Earth.
Yeah, I would just ask that in the way you listed those projects at AG, that you insert first Townwide Fuel Depot? Because we had said that was a priority in Townwide potential, so. Okay, I have, I have a summary from my two departments. First, Fire Department. The addition, a potential addition and renovation to Station 1. Possible discussion of a new station, leaning more towards the thought of a new building more certainly located in town. Replace ladder 1 on the June 2020 annual town meeting to purchase a used truck to better plan with Finance Committee on purchase of new ladder could buy us 10 to 15 years to plan. This was approved, and the ladder should be delivered by the end of July or the beginning of August. So we went with a used truck. I think it's coming from Sunbury, as I remember. Replace engine 3. Truck is 30 years old, which is about the lifespan of the fire engine. Replace forest 31 and 2. Forest 31 has been replaced with old cotton and a 3. Forest 32 is still in dire need of replacing the chassis. That is a 1989. And continue to talk and look at man on auto auction for a replacement chassis. Replace car 3. This is done. Just waiting for delivery, and this car will be renamed to Squad 1. Replacement plan for ambulances on a five-year cycle. This is done. The new truck will be put in, will be put on ATM every five years. This was discussed when we were going to purchase the ambulance. It was last year. This is something the Finance Committee asked that we keep an eye on this so that they just don't spring up. But if we look at this for a five-year cycle, then it's a reminder that we need to be keeping this equipment up to date. Under personnel, Fire Chief wanted to hire additional full-time personnel. Three, a lieutenant and two firefighters to cover the 24 hours a day, seven days a week shifts. To establish a weight scale of call personnel. This is done. We updated that and revised that at the last Selectmen's meeting. Number three, create a new fire prevention shift Monday through Friday to bring more consistencies to inspection. Replace car number four. This was approved at the town meeting, and this will be the electric vehicle that is on order. IMC access in fire vehicles. This would require purchasing tablets and more IMC mobile licenses. Replace SCVAs, 29 packs, coming up on 15 years old and five to six NFA standards behind. Going to explore a grant for this. Replace engine 1. It'll be 30 years old in 2030. Replace engine 2. It will be 30 years old in 2032.
Do you mind adding still a question? Sure. So just specifically about the first part, the addition and renovation to Station 1, possibly a new station. How do we figure out, and I say we, I'm using that term like loosely. At what point does we come to the conclusion on either direction that needs to be taken on that? Like, does this need to be studied? Do we form a study committee that looks into this? How is that working? Because I know you have a lot on your plate, and obviously, well, you can't make the decision by yourself, so how is it all working? Do we form?
I think whether it's an addition to the Main Street Station or a proposal to build a central station is really going to be based on finances. And probably, this would be a good topic to meet with the Finance Committee or the committee that we're trying to form.
Capital Outlay Committee.
Because obviously, this is a down-the-road thing. An addition to a fire station could be done without a bond issue, because you're not talking about building a whole new structure. However, if the thought is that a whole new station in central location should be considered. This has been talked about for years. The central location is on William Street, approximately near Reebrother's apartment. So it's been talked about for years. However, when, that would be a capital expense, and the reason why I'm saying it's really going to be based on finances because even with a debt exclusion, we've got to look at all the outstanding debt exclusions. We have school facilities. We are facing something happening at Bristol Plymouth. We are looking at bond issue payments for the agricultural high school. We have a small capital assessment to be P and A sheet, but the Aggie school money, obviously, that hasn't hit. We have the bond on our new police station. So any bond, any project that's going to require a bonding, we're going to have to look at all of the outstanding debt we have, because even though it's a debt exclusion, it's outside the tax levy. So even though operational, we may be under the tax levy, when you add in all those small car mortgage payments, that comes off the, that comes off of the tax levy. So we've got to really look at all of that. So I think this is, it has been discussed over the years, and I think it will be down the road, a financial decision about what can we do and when can we do it? Is a potential addition to Station 1 something we can accomplish, especially if we can do it without a bond issue? If we're talking a whole new fire station, we're talking big bucks. So I think that's why it's up there.
Yes, thinking back on that, so the fire station location, Fire Station 1 location came up during the MVP discussions because it's a flood plain. And then we started looking into how close the wetlands are there, and so building out isn't really an option, and building up. My hope for building up was crushed by Mr. Aguirre, who told me the building's not really fit for it. So it's worth a discussion to look at a, not a renovation, a new one, for a variety of reasons. But it did come up on the MVP, so there may be an angle there.
When, when we discussed this initially, I said to the chief, "Where would the addition go?" He says, "On the pad right next door." That would be the extent of an addition. And when I say the pad, it's enough to park a vehicle, because beyond that, even though we own that property, it's where we're getting into where the store was, and outside of the parking area, that's very, very wet. So, so there certainly is a question about that. Now, again, when we start talking about current mortgage payments and proposed potential, we also have the potential of the library. We have the potential of the sewer line. Those are more bondable projects. So those are all going to have to be in that financial discussion, so to speak. Now, I'll take this one a little out of order. We've talked about the highway department, building a highway department facility at the town landfill and consolidating all of the highway department operations at the landfill, transfer station. Which would, if we could, and maybe it's a salt shend, go with it, which, if we could do that, would free up the property we own where the current highway department is that could be sold or hopefully get some income for the town. So add to potential other bondable projects, a highway garage. Also, what I mentioned initially when you gave your report, the Townwide Fuel Depot, which we said is a priority for the entire town. And obviously, the highway department, salt shend, would be one project together. But we have all of these other capital outlay projects, so when we get that kind of capital outlay committee formed and can sit down and meet, we're going to have to start ranking.
I'm glad you said that. I feel like we're getting into that, Bill. And it's not just, to your point, Selecting Blue Earth, it's not just like, it is ranking, because you always have to prioritize. The budgets are priorities. The decisions we make at every meeting are priorities. But it's also just like what could get done. Like, what could get done without a grant? Like, okay, that could get done faster. Maybe that moves up. So there are a lot of like moving parts there.
And the fuel depot, we were going to meet on that, and then the pandemic cannot.
It derailed quite a bit of our plans.
Right, so we haven't, we haven't been able to talk to DEP and get input from them and get some guidance. But as I say, hopefully, when we can get the committee together and at least get all of these things on one piece of paper and then figure out, okay, what's our chances of getting DEP to come in and talk to us? What are any of these capital projects, projects that could be done without a bond issue, and what does that mean? So the list is getting longer as the time, as the five years be moving out, as we accomplish certain things and cross them off, the list is continuing.
The capital outlay committee, that's one that also doesn't have a quarter right now, right?
No, not yet. We've just gone to, we've just changed the law. We're waiting for review from the state that passes muster, and then we can start moving.
We named the title, so we.
Yes, we wanted its employees with some outline.
So Mrs. Cool, I, if you remember, our last actual in-person, and Amy in Cal, I believe it was back in January, we got a tour of the fire station, and they have, they're a wealthy community with that. But they save a lot of money every year for these projects, so they anticipate in three or four years down the road, or five years, whatever, down the road, they'll be doing these projects. So I think, I strongly believe that we should, and they do a percentage of their free cash, if I remember correctly, that they automatically go onto stabilization capital outlay.
So they don't, you might.
I think they also earmark solar farm money.
Yeah, pilot agreements.
So we don't have that kind of money. However, I think before every department, and I'm not just referring to the highway department, but every department that comes to us for the free cash in October, we have to seriously think about making sure that we put a fair amount of that free cash, so-called free cash, inside the council that in the future, we have the funds and the monies to do these different projects. I know we're not going to paint the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
But we have a lot of projects at the town. It's not wants, it's actually needs.
I know. I agree.
So we have to look at.
And, and the potential for pilot agreements. We only have one. It's a small one, and we did not designate that money.
Like, you're.
Exactly. But I know we hope that it's earmarked there, solar farm money. I'm not sure what account. It may be a capital outlay account for all I know. Potentially Cal told us about that, and I've been checking with a couple of other communities, whoever else on the board that I sit on in the day, because I know they have solar farms, so I'm going to find out if they earmarked the money. But that may be a potential, because it's not money we have now. Eventually, it will decrease and go away. And it's a force savings if we vote to do it and get the town to support that.
In 2018, the town passed a 3% tax, excise tax on recreational marijuana sales. So once William Street's up and running for recreation, the 3% can just be earmarked.
It can be earmarked, unfortunately.
The 3% on excise tax or the house community?
So the way that it works and the way that it was, so I also thought you could just like figure out how much money you got and then put it towards these things. You can, but it's, it's not in the way that I think we think it is. Like, it's not like we can just say right now, like, okay, that, some of that, $100,000 for that 3% is going to go towards public safety. Like, it can't, it can't be done that way. So the way the law was written, no, the way the law was written is that it's to prevent monopolies like that over the money. It's so that it goes back into the general fund. Yes, you can spend it on, you get where I'm going. Like, yes, you can spend it on whatever you want. We, it's, it's like it's.
That's what I'm saying. So the money comes in year X. The money comes in, and then we get all of our information from DOR, and then we're like, "We made $100,000 off of the excise tax." And then as a town, at town meeting, the decision is made to take that money and put it towards, in this case, we're talking about a municipal building. I just want to be clear, my, my suggestion is about the 3% excise and not anything to do with post moving. But the 3% excise tax, that goes on to a purchase.
Yeah, I feel like I'm making a distinction without a difference. It's, my distinction is just that, it's not that exact money. It's just $100,000. Yeah, thank you. I know, it's like such a stupid point.
I think we're saying.
Thank you for humor.
You know, the other thing I mentioned, Aggie School and VP, obviously VP is not floating a bond issue yet, but they're going through the process with school building assistance for what they need to do. And they're looking at replacing the roof and repairing the facade, and I mean, these are necessary expenditures. We know about those two schools. We also know that there's a study committee to get our own schools, and we haven't even talked about that, but that's, our committee is going to have to add schools to the list besides the two I mentioned, because our own schools are looking to do things. So we've got all of those things to look at this list, too.
So great amount like the other pandemic.
Yes. So heading back to the highway department. The road sweep was completed. That had been approved. It's a lease purchase. Catch basin cleaner truck need to consider discontinuing self-cleaning due to prop disposal. Basin cleanings, consider third party. We talked about this briefly, but this is something that, Mr. Berry, I believe you support this. Do you want to speak on this?
I, I think it's self, explain it to her, because if we create our own disposal, you know, if we collect our own duty dirt, we're going to own it and dispose it. So if we put that burden on the third party, we relieve ourselves of that liability.
Which we budget, we talked about this during the budget.
Right.
And, and we have to report the MS4, how many basins get cleaned and how many tons of whatever come out. And the cleanings are considered passive waste, which is another nightmare. You just can't stockpile it and give it to people to use in their cars. So that's why a number of communities are saying contracted elements, a contracted deal with the disposal. We'll just, you know, take care of that. Replace dump trucks. Autumn one and received one from 2019. Still need to consider replacing aging fleet. Okay. How many, how many would you say within the next two to three years need replacement? Just a ballpark, yes?
Within two or three years, I would go for one.
Okay. So that's.
You'd have three in that early 90s.
Okay. So that's something when the committee meets, we've better have, Monique from you, the art from the town administrator, the information about ages and things like that of existing vehicles. Replace one pickup truck. This was completed. It was approved in the fall of 2019. Replace compressor for jackhammer. Replace cement mixer. Replace utility trailer with a utility tractor with a blue mower. Replace large area mall that has been completed. Consider a tree truck with new, used, a new or used tree truck. This will replace our Derek Digger, which only just bought. This will replace our Derek Digger, which only just bought it. Again, the fuel depot, build a new highway garage, as we discussed earlier, the new salt shed, which would go with it. And he had asked for additional personnel for office, additional hours for his office assistant, and that was completed. So quite a bit of what Fire and Highway had been asking for when this was on this list has been completed. But as I said, as the five years keep moving out and we take looks at what happens in the next five years, obviously, if the list keeps moving out, that's what we have.
So it sounds like the next steps, so obviously, everyone will self-manage and you'll continue your meetings and all that. But then it sounds like eventually, once Attorney General Healy comes back and signs off on that capital outlay committee rework of the bylaw, and they get up and running, then we should have a meeting with them. But I think that's probably gonna be...
Right, but then that committee needs to meet like every year during the budget process, make their recommendations, and then we have a whole group of people that know what's going on, what's coming down the pipe and all that.
I also hope they work with the finance committee. Mr. Rendon is on it, so...
And one member is from the finance committee, and the finance committee gets to appoint somebody. Last I went down.
And going forward, I'll make sure I type up a report. So, Selectman Pacheco, your email, saved the day for me, I appreciate that.
Well, actually, seeing Mrs. Goulart...
Yes, okay, that was the change.
Hey, all I can tell you is, I got the email and I forwarded it to the chief and Mr. Berry, and it was almost instantly, they were waiting, it was back, and I followed it to, I think, within 24 hours. They were just, they've been on a roll. The townspeople have been very positive in approving things that they need, things that they asked for, so they stand right on top of it.
Good work, everyone. Okay, if it's okay with you, Mr. Berry, I'm gonna acknowledge the correspondence on the tree. Did you wanna say anything about it?
Mr. Chairman.
I understand, Casey, the question part is...
Oh, okay.
Under select minister reports, I just wanted to mention. I told you before that I attended the continued strategy deals hearing with ZBA. I gave them the letter and I explained the letter that we had sent, both letters. The only thing the stormwater committee now has hanging, which I expect to get a letter back to ZBA within the next week. These are the two items that were actually planned items that deal with high water tables in certain areas in the proposed project as they relate to road construction and also housing construction. So I've sent some information, requested information out. I will be forwarding the two sections to the appropriate members of the stormwater committee so we can just write a response to this, we're saying, please don't waive weeks. And their council, our town council, Mitchell, said she felt that the ZBA could issue modifications to the existing regulations or bylaw so that there would be control over this and it wouldn't be waived entirely, because in places, there are proposed sections of road that will be below the water table. So obviously, we stand on top of that, so I just wanted you to know. And the next meeting, there will be a continuation of that in August. I think it's August the 13th, if that's a Thursday. So the ZBA is getting to the end of the list. So with this, with this letter, I think the stormwater committee will have weighed in on everything, and we'll just sit back and pray.
Well, I hope they get to the end of the list and not that it would never work. So, did you have any questions on that? I think that you go. Okay, under correspondence, our fearless tree boarder has sent a letter to a resident regarding a tree at 382 Main Street. And it's in here, I'm not gonna read it, but I did just wanna ask, did anybody, yes?
Just, I'm sorry, point of periphrision, it hasn't been sent yet.
Oh, okay.
The tree warden is commenting on this issue that has been ongoing since August, when Selectman Pacheco was chairman. I had briefed you, I guess, on what had been going on. There's a disagreement about a tree, whether or not it's located on town property. And the person has been communicated with via letter multiple times, multiple different people, representatives of the town. He's not leaving a phone number, so it would be much easier to converse with this person over the phone, but I think the tree warden is advising, is that the right word? Advising you?
Yeah, there was a letter sent to the Selectmen Board recently, and I'm more addressing the board rather than the author of the letter, just so we can be on the same page in how to approach this. So it should not be the matter of whose tree it is, the way I see it. This person has the right to protect their property, trim or remove the tree if necessary. I don't believe in this circumstance, the burden's being on a town to prove whose tree it is. I think he can do that. And I went over with a town administrator, it's pretty clear, and also it might be a question whether our fence is on his property anyways, and the tree is on his side of the fence. And he's a possible bond marker between a tree and a fence. So regardless who tree it is, he should be taking care of his problem. The letters, the letters, the letters started last August.
Or not.
The letters started last August, we're almost a year now, we're playing games. And the first request was their insurance company required the town to turn the tree away from their house. I called the insurance company, it was not the case. So they're just trying to find a way of maintaining their property.
And they, maybe I'm, just so I understand, I'm sorry. But your position, if we, I guess, agree, the town's position is that they need to remove the tree, right?
If they, well, whatever's posing a possible threat to their property, they can take care of that.
Okay, I get what you're saying. Because it's on their property.
Yes.
Okay, got it, sorry.
Unless you want us to go on their property.
No, no, no. Not these person. Selectman Pacheco, did you...
So the pictures that you provided us, what is, I see a fence, whose property is that we're looking at?
I'm standing in the playground. And that's the picture of the tree on the other side of the fence. And you should see some type of marker between the fence and the tree.
I have a point. It's like a stone little thing. I have one, because Mr. Berry takes me on field trips sometimes, so I can visualize. It's like a little stone marker, and it's between the fence and the tree.
But again, it really doesn't matter whose tree it is. If these houses in jeopardy, you should be trimming branches. We're approximately 150 feet away from the road. This is in the southeast corner of the playground is where it is.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Berry?
I did, I did see the letter when I came into the office and I screwed the note on the envelope that this man should go to the tree one. I didn't know whose tree it was, if that was an important issue or not. I'm very familiar with the area, because for almost 35 years, I lived at 372 Main Street. And we frequented, frequented that playground all the time. I think also, if this thing were out close to the road, like any tree that's close to the road, no matter who owned it, if it presented a fall-down hazard in a windstorm or something, what we know is, if a tree falls on the town road, regardless of whose tree it is, a highway department was out and initially pushes it back, and then they'll cut it up, and the owner can have it or whatever, I understand it. But I also think that considering the distance that this is from the road, I'm completely insistent on what Mr. Berry is saying. I don't see that we should go onto that private property and do something. If that tree falls down and it falls on the owner's property, that owner's gonna clean it up. If that tree, that I believe belongs to 382, falls down and ends up in the playground, then I think the town would clean it up. But other than that, I don't believe it's our problem.
Since Nancy has a knowledge in that area, they used to, in that picture, that's, you can see that's actually used to be a gate here. And when I was a kid, I remember, it definitely used to flow through the area. Do you remember why that was blocked off?
I think part of the problem was the neighbors complained about the traffic through the yards. I can tell you when I lived there for the first, up until the DeCamber family passed away, okay? The kids could move freely through the yards, because they all backed up onto school lane, pretty much. And we didn't want them out in front yard to play on Main Street, quite frankly. So, but after a while, as I remember, I believe that was blocked off because of the traffic. And it wasn't just the little kids who lived in those houses. There was a steady flow back and forth. And then the problems that created at the playground, quite frankly, were the bigger kids. That 11 o'clock at night was still over there, because it was lit. And neighbors complained, and the playground commissioner took some action. I believe that's what the problem was.
My position, if anyone cares, is that, I agree with the letter. I mean, the pictures are clear, the letter is clear. So I support the tree warden's position on this.
I also, I can bear with the letter itself.
So the last letter from Mr. Denton, who's representing the property owner, which is actually a trust, was directed to the board of selection.
What we can do, if it's okay with everybody, is highlight the points that the tree warden has advised us, basically, and then send it from the board.
On the board letterhead.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we respond to the letter. Your own.
Sorry.
Mr. Thomas Denton.
To Attorney Jeffrey Denton. Stating the reasons why, stating the reasons presented by the highway superintendent that are supported by the board of selection, which indicates that the board does not feel that the town has responsibility for removing that tree.
My second motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. So we will use the points highlighted in the tree warden's correspondence, and we will put that onto our board's letterhead and send that off, okay?
Thank you.
Next is a letter of appreciation for Tom Pires, who was a longtime, not just, I should say, longtime public servant. I mean, he served in so many capacities, I mean, we would be here until 11:00 PM, delineating all the different ways that Tom Pires had served his town, our town. But I did, so I did wanna read this, and it's dated July 15, 2020. And it's from the current chairman of the planning board, Timothy Rhimes, to Tom Pires. And it says, Dear Tom, on behalf of the planning board for the town of Dayton, I'd like to extend our appreciation for the amazing work done by you as an elected member of the planning board. Your diligence, self-motivation, as well as dedication to always go the extra mile in order to achieve the best possible results is really admirable. The board knows the amount of effort that you put into your position, and we want to assure you that your efforts are recognized. Once again, thank you so much, we're lucky to have you on board. Sincerely, Timothy Rhimes, Chairman. As our current board's chairman, I also wanted to thank Mr. Pires as well for his service, not only as a member of the planning board, but he continues to serve our town as the chairman of the board of health for the last three plus years. So thank you very much, Mr. Pires, for all you contributed and continue to contribute.
So along these lines, Mr. Pires was appointed by the board of selection to be a representative to the stormwater committee from the planning board. Mr. Pires says he's willing to continue in that capacity if the planning board wants him to continue as their liaison. And if the board of selection agreed, it would be appropriate. So what I asked Mrs. Grassley to do is to look back, and I mentioned Mr. Karen, when the stormwater committee was formed, we just mentioned our representative from the planning board, the board of selection, so forth and so on. I believe that if the planning board would like him to serve, because he's willing to do it, they need to request of the board of selection permission to have him appointed, as they would appoint him as liaison, and we would recognize that point. So in the meantime, I told him, he is, he had been reappointed by us, and until a replacement is appointed, he's gonna continue to serve. So that's how we left it, but this will be coming up as an agenda item for the board of selection, so that we will have appropriate representation. If the planning board should decide they don't want him to do it, and somebody on the board wants to, he would stay with us, only he would become the board of health rep, which would then remove Mr. Pillen, who is the board of health rep, okay? But since Mr. Pires was very, very positive and strongly offering to continue, we're looking into this to just figure out what's the correct way to do it based on when that committee was formed. So I'll just bring that to your attention. So he's still with us, and he will represent the planning board until we get all the information, figure out how this can be done.
He's also on the 40B committee, and I've spoken to him about that also. He's a representative of the planning board. He actually created the board of selection, the 40B committee, who was a representative for the board of selection. And then when he left, he became a representative from the planning board. He has an interest in remaining on the 40B committee. So I'll look at that also, whether the planning board wants him to represent the 40B committee, so it's a similar situation. He still has an interest in it. I was the ZBA representative, and then when I became selection, I became a selection, so a stuck person, representative. So I would, if it's possible, if he would like to remain on that committee also.
My only, I don't even know what to call it. My only concern, I guess, I know she would be staying on it. My only issue is having the health agent removed and then having Mr. Pires on. Is there not a way we can have them both be on there?
Well, you're looking into it, and this isn't, you can't really...
Sure, sure. We'll just be standing up.
I will say this in closing, a general statement. I do not remember that we said, number one, you don't have to be an elected official, you represent the board who says, would you do it? I do know, in my own personal case, way back when, as soon as I heard they were gonna fund the Berkeley-Davidson Bridge, I was on Fifth Park. And I came to the board of selection and said, I would love you, I would love you to appoint the liaison to the board of selection for that project. What does that mean? I won't make any decisions, I won't spend any money. You're gonna know everything that's going on, but there's gonna be a contact person who can act in your behalf, on your direction. So it's possible to appoint a liaison? So, but we're just checking all the details, so it'll be coming up.
Getting a little touchy. You never start a conversation like that with me.
I just have a family of others, so I... So this is actually the second time he's been on the planning board. Many years ago, he wasn't on the planning board. He was our select person for three terms, nine years, and then he chose to be part of the planning board. So I appreciate all the work he's done for the town.
I can't, like, it's, it's like I didn't hear about, like, Frank Costa, just people that I was probably too young to like be aware of, them as leaders of the town, and so I just really respect someone that's just like, he doesn't even get named after these things, so...
Pillar of the community.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yep, we stand on the shoulders of giants. It is true. We don't have any acknowledgements this evening, but we did get to acknowledge Mr. Pires' minutes. So one of my colleagues, we have except for review of the minutes of the joint meeting with the pandemic task force of June 17, 2020, and except for review the minutes of the board of selection's regular meeting in July 8, 2020.
I saw it.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Jeffrey, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You as well. Uh, hearing no further discussion on accepting for review these two minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And, uh, we will, I will entertain motions to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of June 10, 2020.
Okay, I've just commented this before. I had a question for the last time, 'cause there were some changes that were given just prior to, um, the meeting. I did not check the grammatical or spelling aspect of it, but I did check, uh, the comments, the statements that I made, and I'm okay with the, uh, Mrs. Gula at the main as a change to the minutes, uh, the meeting, and I'm okay with that, that change. So, I'm in favor of us approving. So, I'll make a motion, then we approve the minutes of the June 10, uh, Board of Selectmen's meeting, June 10, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Selecting Gula, you have the board to be approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I think that following warrants dated July 15 be approved. 55A-20 payroll, amount $54,088.28. 55B-20 becomes payable, $124,973.01. Those are both FY21 warrants.
Second motion. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I know the following warrants also dated July 15 be approved. 3A-21 payroll, amount $98,035.82. 3B-21 payroll, amount $24,320. 3C-21 becomes payable in the amount of $94,822.86. These are all FY21 warrants be approved.
Second motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Okay, and I think the motion that the following warrants dated July 22 be approved. 4A-21 payroll, amount $106,319.11. 4B-21 becomes payable, $305,725.53. 4C-21, these are tax refunds payable, $13,546.11. And these are all FY21 warrants be approved.
Second motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next is, uh, public input. Did we receive any, anything via the Zoom chat?
Uh, it was relative to how long it takes for an appointment to take. She's no longer on the call, but I answered her via, um, this chat box that will take care of that, she, she will frame her appointment process.
Oh, I know exactly what, uh, this is pertaining to. So, I need to check...
I'm judged in a...
I need to check the electronic form to make...
I think it's going in his spam or something.
Correct, so it's either that or just, sometimes it does, I don't know how to describe it, sometimes it doesn't go to where it should when you click that submit button. I need to do a test and see when I do it, if it's sending to the right place, because I never, I get CC'd on all those emails, and I never got...
I, I didn't get it either. We were also blacklisted for a time when we first transferred over to remote means of working, 'cause there was, um, issue with that particular function of our website. Uh, well, there were other issues as well, but that was one of them, and I'm wondering if there's some carryovers on that, but it's stopping some cyberspace block.
Um, but I believe that was the individual who had expressed interest for the NDA commission, so hopefully, we, I, I told them to email it, um, so we should have that issue for the August 12 meeting. And I will...
Will me too, I wrote that.
Has that function. Um, anything else? Did we get anything via email or telephone?
Oh.
We've seen it right here. Uh, hearing, since we don't have any public input, I will entertain motions to adjourn.
So...
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Uh, have a wonderful evening, everyone. Enjoy yourselves.